I'm gonna call this, where's Lisa? Lisa, I'm gonna call this, um, August 4th meeting of the Mount Airy Town Council in order. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to this monthly meeting of the Mount Airy Town Council. We have a good number of people in the audience. Let's start to the agenda. We have no presentations, no guest speakers, and we have approval of the minutes. We've got both the open meeting minutes and the closed meeting minutes, which were sent to us. I made one minor change that I think has been updated in the minutes that are in the packet.
Unfortunately, I have a series of substantial changes. Should I go with my changes?
Uh, well, let's hear them. Lisa, you ready to re- Lisa, as long as Lisa's ready, let's hear it.
Page two, under Mrs. Felder, her presentation. Lisa, just go back and check the tape. I think you'll find that I received consensus from the council to refer this unsolicited proposal to the community task force. And I think it's relevant because it's not really a function of the community task force, but since all the expertise on teen center and whatnots in the community task force to council went along with the consent, went along with that to send that to them. On the ordinance 2012-14, the signed ordinance, um, some of the language, uh, third sentence down, "The portion of the signed ordinance that limits the time has been deemed unconstitutional." It really, if you go through the tape, I think the phrase really used was "is arguably unconstitutional." Because I was, there's been one or two citizens that have brought that phrase up, and I think it's really relevant, and I think that's what was discussed. Also, along that same paragraph, "The town attorney's opinion was that we can regulate the size of political signs." The language says "may take the liberty." I think it's relevant to say the town attorney's opinion was we could regulate the size of political signs. Again, if you just check the tape, the signed ordinance amendment, what's missing here is the planning commission gave a favorable recommendation. So that was presented to the council with a favorable recommendation from the planning commission. That's not located here. And... And then down at the bottom in italics, where you talk about, "In order for the ordinance to be passed as an emergency measure, require four votes, did not pass this meeting, and will be brought up again for consideration." It will be brought up as a regular ordinance. So we asked for emergency, didn't get it, so it's coming up as a regular ordinance.
Can I intervene right there? You got a, uh, under the motion, uh, under second, I think the yeas and nays, uh, I think I was just opposite. I think Councilman King voted nay, and I voted ye.
Okay, if we could verify the tape.
Yes, and that is correct. I, because I didn't want it to be an emergency.
Right.
The skipping to, um, if you could review the tape first, number five, charter amendment, resolution 2014-2. There wasn't a remotion. I, um, pulled it from the table, so I didn't remotion. It was just pulled from the table after discussion. And then part of the discussion, I think, if you, again, review the tape, two things were missing. First of all, the council and community identified problems with the existing ordinance, so we passed a recall, but there were problems identified with it. And then again, I pulled it from the table based on suggestions and needs for change.
And I, and I think Bruce very eloquently spoke about the problems he had with it and the timing, all of the timing issues.
But I don't know if we want to put to that little detail. I mean, we count that it was a timing. It was, you know, Bruce had pointed out.
But the question was whether or not the, the current ordinance could actually be handled by the Board of Elections, given the timeframes.
Right. Yeah, so.
But that was the only problem with it, was that it needed to have that reviewed by the Board of Elections.
Yeah, right.
I want to be clear, there wasn't multiple problems. Board of Elections said they wanted to review it.
With the ordinance, it was already passed. That was the only issue, was Board of Elections needs to kind of look at that over to make sure they can meet the timeframes.
Correct. Okay. Again, moving on to unfinished business, number one, extension of water services agreement. I, I believe that reflects a substantive change. I believe the change was, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the change was not that, the change was that if the property gets brought back into town, they pay regular rates. Wasn't that the change?
Correct.
Okay, that's not what the minutes reflect.
If at some point in time, they were annexed.
If they get an X, then they go back on regular people.
Right.
Unless the property is annexed into the town limits, the town has the right to charge additional charges to those outside the town limit.
Yeah, that wasn't. No, well, the change was, that's in there already. The change was, the change that their attorney wanted was, we agreed to was, if it gets annexed in, then they get regular rates. That, that's really what the change was.
That was the change, the change from the prior versions. It was that they said, hey, what if we actually get an X sometime? Can we just be like everybody else? And we were like, we thought that was very reasonable.
Right, so my suggestion, based on the, the number of changes and, um, some of the things that the rest of the councilmen said, that we review this again at later date. Those are the, those are my changes.
All right. I mean, those are fairly substantial. Do you guys want to have this redone? Because there were several, listen to tapes. I, I just want to see, you know, get, kind of get a consensus from you guys, just bring it back next month.
We need a motion for that? Because I'm.
No, I don't think we need a motion for that. I think we can just.
I think we can wait for it.
We can just wait till, till all those have been, till she goes back to the tape and updates it, instead of dealing with it this month?
Right. Yeah, absolutely agree.
Because there were a fair amount there. Okay, Lisa, we're just gonna do that.
Right, and, and the reason why, I mean, some of these are important, they're important. So the record needs to, I guess, reflect.
Any issues on the closed minutes?
Not that I saw.
Then I will move that we accept the minutes from the closed meeting, um, for, that we held on July 7th, 2014. I have a second from Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. We will deal with the changes in the minutes next month. Police report. Super Thompson. Welcome back. Did she get four? It's coming this way, I guess.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, I'm TFC Thompson, filling in for Corporal Noise. Sitting at the desk right now, um, doing the monthly July Mount Airy Resident Trooper Program Report. In July, we had a total of 369 calls, um, in town and 13 out of town. More than likely, because it's summertime, when you get more calls, especially with juveniles. In, within those calls, we had, uh, only seven juvenile complaints. We had 34 miscellaneous complaints, um, two alcohol, tobacco violations, four assaults, one CDS violation, there was 13 thefts, and three trespassing, four vandalism, destruction of property, um, and we had 19 motor vehicle collisions. And with the motor vehicle collisions, 15 of them were code 89s, which we refer to as minimum damage, no, uh, physical injury, and we had four serious collision, four serious collisions, which three of them were charged. We also did 212 business checks, 172 regular patrol checks, and 32 school checks. There was one CDS arrest, there was four non-CDS arrests, four warrants or summons, and we did 26 community policing and two crime preventions. Also, of course, there was the, uh, Mount Airy fireworks, that was on July 4th. TFC Bonneville and TFC Pike actually participated in that, no complaints. And we also had the Mount Airy carnival from July 21st to the 26th, which myself, uh, Trooper Smith, TFC Pike, and Bonneville participated. We had no complaints. On the second page, um, pretty much states everything from the first page to all our reports. We had, unfortunately, we had one heroin overdose, one steroid overdose. Let's see, a lot of them are thefts, most of them are closed, some are still open, which are pending charges. Of course, the one CDS violation. We also had a violation of peace order, which that person was arrested. One domestic between father and son. That's pretty much summing that up. And the third page just explains for the second page what a CR are, what our acres reports are. And the fourth page is our monthly mileage and, or guests that we use in town.
Questions, anyone?
Just a, just a reminder to the community, um, and it'd be great if the press could get this in, in as well. In the town of Mount Airy, you need a peddler's license to go door to door to solicit. So if anybody's coming to your house in the town, according to town's code section 7-80, they have to have a peddler's license from town hall. So if anybody's coming knocking on your door, trying to sell you something, ask them if they have a peddler's license. If they do not, then you're free to call the troopers who can cite them for that. So if you're interested in maintaining privacy at your home, please remember that. Thank you.
Chris, can you tell them what the exceptions are?
I actually don't know.
Boy Scouts and civic organizations such as that are exempt from that particular stuff. The Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts come selling cookies, Fire Department, uh, please, please don't call the troopers for that, but there's several vendors.
Not on our Boy Scouts.
There's a gentleman in the audience that calls me at least twice a month because he notices these vendors, and we have never issued a peddler's license in the town of Mount Airy. But there are exceptions, but very few.
Now, the big question is, if we've never issued one, if somebody comes in, what do we gotta do?
According to Debbie, she's clarified this several times. According to Debbie, we do have them, they must get them here, but they just don't.
Okay, so we'll, we'll come up with something. We'd rather have to deal with the problem than... Super Thompson, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I've gotten at least one complaint of a very aggressive solicitor coming to somebody's door. When told that was, probably, the response was problematic.
Oh, yeah, they, they get very aggressive and point well taken. Unless they're basically Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, or Fire Department, they shouldn't be at your door.
All right. Mountain Volunteer Fire Company.
Good evening. For the month of July, there was a total of 169 calls, 97 in Carroll, 61 in Frederick, eight in Howard, and three in Montgomery. And just a little note here, this morning, we ran a, reported a townhouse fire, and the townhouse's awful waters were rained in the friendly acres. A small child, approximately eight years old, not really sure the exact age, woke up to find a fan plug on fire at the socket. He woke up his mother and two others in the, in the residence, including two small children. They evacuated the townhouse. The fire burned itself out prior to our arrival. There was no extension past the plug, the wall outlet, and there was working smoke detectors in the residence. Just a side note that a townhouse, that style, should have at least six working smoke detectors per the town code. So just a little reminder on that. And, um, on behalf of Bruce, myself, and all the officers and members of the department, would like to thank everybody that came out and helped us make the carnival a huge success again this year, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yeah, I had, had a great time being in the Dunk Boos, as always. It's always, always a lot of fun, and the parade is always a lot of fun as well.
That's, that's always a good time.
Yeah, so thank you for letting us participate. Community concerns, citizen comments, this is a time we set aside for anyone who wants to address the council on any issue. Come on up. Hey, Dave.
Hey, guys.
You know the routine, identify yourself.
I know the routine, yeah, Dave Piyat, uh, from 705 Park Avenue. I guess this is good timing. I went to a planning commission workshop, I believe it was July 9th, and, um, I had some concerns about the way the master plan was proceeding. There was a, a big, well, I mean, we had a meeting here in the fall where they were out in the corridor regarding the request for rezoning for various properties, and I know specifically the Carnival Grounds property was one that was discussed, and that was recommended to be denied by the planning commission at that time. Then there was a public hearing, uh, November, I believe, last year, at the Carnival Ground building, and at that time, it was pretty obvious that that was the decision of, at least the planning commission, was to deny that zoning. Over the winter, without really announcing it, or, you know, maybe it was announced, but I didn't really pick up on it, and nobody else did. Apparently, the decision was reversed to grant the request, recommend, you know, that it be granted commercial. Now, before we get into it, I, I'd just like to talk to Bruce. I mean, I've worked with the Mount Airy Fire Company during my 24 years on the council, and I've also been a member of the Lions for 25 years, and we've worked hand to hand on various projects, um, you know, the, the Lions Carnival, the Fire Carnival. For many, many years, I volunteered as a worker and thought I had a pretty good relationship.
Right. I think, I don't think he should be dressing us, not him.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It has been, uh, it has always been an understanding that eventually the fire property would be sold. I mean, this is based on many years of working together. Oscar Baker asked me probably almost 20 years ago, why it was, um, I think Peter may have been on the Parks Board when we were doing all those ball field, you know.
I think you're correct.
Yeah, Oscar talked to me, I don't know if I mentioned it, that to try to build up the ball field capacities so that when the fire company eventually had to kind of wean themselves from the ball players, that there would be places for them to play. It was always an understanding that that's, that's what would happen. I'm very sympathetic to, to everybody in this situation. Now we have new planning commission, I think it's almost a complete turnover, very few people have the history of that. I was concerned, I'm also a member of the American Society of Civil Engineers, and I've been following the funding for transportation, and it's horrible because the Congress keeps, you know, dribs and drabs, but highway funding is a big problem. There was one thought that by the year 2023, the entitlements will be equal to the federal budget. There won't be anything left over for anything else. That's not too far away, but there is a, a track record that highway funding is very difficult to come by. So I thought, now, now do I do? Because the planning commission had made a recommendation. I thought, well, I'll start a petition. That was one approach, because it had, the master plan has to come to the council. I talked to some people, this was my first petition. Some said, just deny it outright. That would be the, the way the petition should read. But I thought, no, that's not exactly right either. I think traffic and what this, this intersection would do is a big concern, because it's already at or over capacity at 27 and Park Avenue. So I developed a, then they say, have something concise. And my petition reads, "In a well-advertised and attended master plan workshop in the fall of 2013, many residents spoke against rezoning the Mount Airy Carnival Grounds from residential to commercial. At that time, traffic gridlock was one of the primary objections. Without doing anything significant to reassess the traffic flow, the Mount Airy Planning Commission reversed their earlier decision and with little public announcement recommended that the rezoning to commercial be recommended. We urge the Mount Airy Town Council to overturn this flawed recommendation from the Mount Airy Planning Commission until the residents are assured," and I think that's more than a traffic study, "are assured that traffic flow in the area will not be unduly impacted." Now, I started, I didn't realize, the good, the good news is July and August are good weather to walk around, but it's also vacation time. So I'd say, less than half the doors I knocked on, I got a response. But in spite of that, I was, I have been able to get 500 signatures so far, about four, you know, 470 or something like that. And I said, okay, I'm gonna cut it off around 500. I would guess that, and a lot of, it's, a number of people said, well, I have to, you know, I don't have enough information, and to come back. I, I would say probably 80% of the people that I talked to and got their interest ended up signing the petition, and probably, and I only did Carroll County. I didn't do the Frederick County side, because it's less travel for me. But I, I, I would argue that you could probably get, I could have gotten 2,000 signatures, and that's kind of ridiculous, because the point is made, I think, that the majority of the people don't want this because of traffic. And there's a lot of, um, just a, just a lot of, I don't know what you call it, angst or concern, or what had you, they just don't want any more traffic.
Dave, you want the petition, you know, I guess, put into the, the record for us speaking legalese?
Okay.
So that, you know, so that I guess it'd be, it gets, does it get stuck to the minutes? Is that, Debbie's not here, so I know she, when we get petitions in the past, she knows exactly where they go in the record.
And I know that we have a public hearing and, you know, all that type of thing, but I just.
Yeah, we have, we're actually in the process right now of scheduling the public hearings for the master plan.
And one thing you might do is send a letter to each one of those people, just letting them know when the public hearing is happening, because there was quite a bit of, um, concern that this change was made without, I'd say, I probably was the only one that knew it, to be honest with you, that I, you know, talked to.
Dave, if you'll, if you'll permit me, the, a couple.
Chris is planning now, so.
Right, so.
This is the department.
Couple, couple issues, because, first of all, thank you for the petition, and I appreciate your concern. A couple statements, though, that, that I think we need to, at least in my opinion, clarify. To say that planning reversed this decision, and I'll quote you, with, which you said was not announced, but, hold on a minute, so, I mean, that's a quote. "Planning makes all of its decisions in public meetings, on TV, for the record." So the fact that planning made a decision, whatever decision it might be, it was never made unannounced, it's made in a public forum. So to imply that planning's making decisions in secret or not in the public's eye is simply not accurate.
I would say that I didn't, I didn't talk to anybody of those 500 or so signatures that knew of those meetings.
But, but, but Dave, there's a difference, pardon me, because you spoke, and there's a difference between, there's a difference between folks paying attention to the press, watching on TV, and, and following the public information that's out there. There's a significant difference between that and planning, the, the statement that planning made a decision and didn't announce it, so that, so.
It wasn't given the same level of announcement.
What level would you expect? Planning sat here and they make decisions. So let me, let me, one or two other things, Dave. The statement that it was an understanding that it would be sold, I'm not sure who, where the understand, the understanding between who? I mean.
It was between me and various, uh, fire company officials over the years. It was never really, I mean, they never really come out and, I mean, it was always implied.
But, but, but Dave, it's critical that if we're putting information out in the public for folks to make decisions on, especially for this body to make decisions on, that, that we, we have hard, solid facts behind. So I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm not where any decision. And then finally, the more critical point here, we understand the traffic. Nothing, i- if the firemen were to rezone and start, and attempt to build tomorrow, they would not be able to because the traffic situation at that intersection has changed. So it's critical to know that, I believe, the Pang property tried to develop, and they pulled themselves off the table because they failed the traffic issue. So, so the, what, the implication here is that if the Carnival Grounds were rezoned commercial, the implication that the traffic would all of a sudden increase is simply not accurate. In fact, if it were to go commercial and they were trying to develop it and build upon it, they have to meet the adequate facilities. They simply can't do that right now.
Well, let me, let me say, I was. When I was on the council, we had, um, the intersection at Ridge Avenue going into the shopping center, and they, we did a traffic study. They had 14 options. The options were horrible to terrible. There was no good option. What I'm saying is, if, let's say hypothetically, this property were zoned commercial, I mean, it's gonna be worth, you know.
That's irrelevant what it's worth, so let's follow that.
Oh, I don't know about that.
But let's follow that line of thinking.
That's, that's the whole argument, it's gonna be worth.
Guys, this is supposed to be a citizen concern section. I know Bob had something quick he wanted to say.
I just, I just want to talk about timeline issues. The draft master plan was put together by the, by the planning commission and offered up at a public hearing for comments on the draft master plan. I believe that public hearing was in December? December 4th. Okay, and we, we came back after the first of the year and had several planning commission meetings and work sessions. Every two weeks, we were having a meeting. And at one of those meetings, one of the, one of the, um, more savvy of, of the people on the planning commission asked, are we supposed to, in, in relooking at this draft master plan, are we supposed to take into account what people said at the public hearing? Do you remember, do you remember that? And, um, I believe she was instructed, yes, you are supposed to take that into account. And that is when, when the topic of the Carnival Grounds came up, because that was one of the, the items at the public hearing that was probably spoken on most, was a lot of people spoke on the, on the Carnival Grounds, and a lot of people spoke in, in support of changing designing to community commercial. So that's, it wasn't done in secret, it wasn't done under the table, it was done here at a meeting, um, in response to the, the public hearing.
Well, you know, I, I was at that meeting, and I think a lot of the people that would have spoken against the rezoning had been led to believe that it was already turned down at the meeting here earlier.
Dave, if I could, I, I agree with you, sometimes these processes are very difficult to follow. They had dozens of meetings. It is difficult, even though they're public, they're announced, it's difficult to follow. What I do just want to instruct the town administrator right now to make sure, and we, I think we did a really good job in at least the beginning of the process, people saw all those yellow signs posted everywhere. Well, we saw them so much, you kind of forgot to read them. They've since come down in many places. Let's make darn sure that properties such as the Fireman's Carnival Grounds are posted, they're posted big, they're posted timely, and that way, that'll take away whenever we're gonna make a decision, that way the, the community will know. Would that, would that help you out?
What I'm saying, in, in essence, is that probably three quarters to 80% of the people in this town don't want to rezon.
Dave, we, we, we've actually heard that several times, appreciate it. I'm not advocating this one way. I'm addressing whether people know or not, and we will do our best.
He's addressing making sure that when it comes to the council. He's addressing making sure that when it comes to the council, where the actual decision will finally be made-
Right.
It will be posted, and people will have a chance to come out and speak yet again.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
Dave, actually, I have one question, because I, this, I'm seeing your petition for the first time now. Obviously, several of you guys here, and you have more experience in planning than I do, because I've never served on planning on purpose. I remember when you wanted to be on planning years ago, and I said, "Dave, why do you want to be on planning? You make enemies over there, stay on parks, people are happy."
I remember that, I remember that same advice.
That's right, I gave you that advice, too. You're talking here about, you know, making, reassessing the traffic flow and everything around that property. My understanding is that you would rezone, and then traffic flow is evaluated when they decide what they're going to build there. In other words, they could, they could rezone commercial and build something there that has less traffic flow than they do now, so isn't this kind of out of order?
I think, I think, to some extent, you're right that we have in the past done many projects that way, where they have given the zoning and then they work out the traffic.
Right, the traffic, well, the traffic's worked out when somebody actually comes and says, "Here's what we want to build there."
But we had a case last week with the Frederick County Master Plan where they approved ten thousand residential units in the New Market area without any way of knowing how seventy-five, twenty-seven, and two-seventy are going to, you know.
I, I can't speak for how Frederick County does things, I just know that our procedure is, my understanding is, our procedure is somebody comes in with a plan, says, "Here's what I want to build," and then we say, "Okay, now you've got to do all these traffic studies to prove that you can build it there, and before you can build it there, if it doesn't meet all the standards, then you've got to upgrade all the roads and all the intersections." As, as, as Chris brought up, the, the Pank property could develop because they couldn't meet that standard, and so they're sitting there with nothing on it because they couldn't build on it. So, the zoning really has nothing to do with the traffic.
Well, when you, when you look at the draft master plan, there, there is a second entrance proposed, but right now, there's only one entrance, and I'm not sure where the second one would be, because that was part of the problem last December, it was discussed, where, you know, and, well, for example, the people in Conestoga Heights, they, they have a different problem, they don't want any of those other roads to come through.
Right.
So, the solution to this particular parcel of land is a bit like a Rubik's Cube. It's not like in the past. The other thing is that twenty-seven as a, as a state highway is probably over capacity. There's more daily traffic on Highway twenty-seven than Interstate seventy, and we, we discussed that. So, the, you're, you have a very, very complicated intersection, and rather than, you know, approve it, I think the people who, who up and down twenty-seven, I live off of Park, there's two-hundred-and-fifty townhouses back there, resident, you know, residential units, give or take, at Twin Arches Crossing, that are very nervous because there's only one way in and out, and I'm not sure you can put a second intersection. I mean, it's a very challenging site, and rather than just sort of kick the can down the road, I'm saying, look at some of the things beforehand. I, like I say, I've talked to the fire company for a long time, I can't speak to them, they have their own, you know, hierarchy, but if they want this, let's work together, develop some what-if scenarios, what, what are some of the roads that, what are things that can be done in combination with the Pank property and some of the, and then there's the, you know, the Beck property over there, work some of these things out, so you don't agree to something.
Another, another question, I guess, for you zoning guys, but my understanding is that you're actually telling them, wait another ten years, because it can only be rezoned at the master plan, essentially.
That's possible.
Ah, yeah, I'm not sure about that.
It can be zoned out of cycle anytime.
I thought it could only be rezoned out of cycle if we showed that there was a substantial change.
Mistake, or mistake.
Or a mistake.
But, but then I talked to another attorney and he said, "No."
Not automatically, not in between master.
No, they have, I thought to file for it, they can end up filing for it and there's a process form to be able to come in.
I think they would have changed the law.
Well, I want to hear what, I want, I want, I want an answer to that question.
Yeah, we do need to explore that, because one attorney told me you could, and I've always thought you couldn't.
I always, I always thought we could only rezone at a master plan if there was substantial change in the property or there was a mistake.
Or a mistake.
Obviously, the other two aren't happening, so.
When they changed the municipal, you know, there's the, what's that, the municipal planning element, you know?
Oh, the, the M G, M, yeah, M G E.
And they changed the, the, the general assembly, it was Centipolis, two thousand or something.
We, we, but it's, we need to get, we need to have Tom clarify that, I think.
Because I, I took the whole planning course. You, the, this master plan just gets something on the record.
There is a process to do it.
And then you can apply at any time for additional zoning changes.
Okay.
I'm not an attorney, but that's.
Well, obviously, we, we need to, that's something we, that's to be clarified, so I'm glad we've, we've, we've got that idea on the table, because like I said, ten years ago, when you and I did it last time, you had to wait another ten years.
Right, but they did change the law with the.
Okay, well, I, I was, we'll have Tom look into that and give us some.
Well, I think it was every six years you're supposed to do a master plan.
Yeah, that's right, back then it was six years, but just.
It's, it's getting really hard to change because of all, and people like me probably don't help any, but, you know.
I know Scott's got something.
I was just gonna say, in the urge of time and hearing the considerations, and we got the petition, and still we haven't seen the master plan for us to even discuss, I think that's, we have enough information to work upon now to, you know, have staff and legal go look at it and provide that to us before we make a decision.
Well, posted, Dave, it'll be posted.
Okay.
Dave, one of the, the comments, and I appreciate the urgency to move on, but this is a really important issue, and a lot of work went into this petition, a lot of work went into this petition.
I lost ten pounds, that's the big, the big.
I think we should all go out and help.
Dave, one of the things the planning commission is doing, the council has funded, as you know, corridor study.
Right.
So, that corridor study, the RFP for the corridor study, should go out within a month or so, and in fact, just so the council knows, we may be asking for a little bit more money for that corridor study, we might, but a corridor study's been funded, so that will go out and start to study some of those issues that, that you've talked about, there may just be no answer. But again, that's, from a pure planning perspective, irrelevant when it comes to rezoning a property. You rezone the property, they can't build unless they meet the standard. And, and the last statement I'll make is, since this has been entered in a record, could, could we have staff, please, make a copy of the petition and make sure everybody on the planning commission gets a copy of it? Thanks.
Well, the only thing I would say, Chris, I thought about that, is that when you zone it commercial, there's a tacit implication that it is developable and that the developer will take it a task on that. And if this, if the fire company gets frustrated and pulls their hair out and it's on commercial, I'm sure they would just turn it over to a developer. The developer then would come in and say, "Look, guys, you can't tell me, I paid this amount of money for that property, you can't tell me I can't develop it." We do a traffic study, I mean.
But Dave, Pank did a traffic study, he failed because the intersection failed, so he's done, he pulled it off the table, the same, the same.
That's not the town telling him, that's adequate facilities.
Same exact thing would happen here.
Maybe.
But Pank, Pank's already proven the point that, that he failed, he can't develop.
Yeah, but that's, that's Mr. Pank, you may get somebody with deeper pockets that.
Doesn't matter, unless, unless, well, if you elect a council like Guts the ABO, which may be going on in another county.
Well, you know, laws change, I mean, we've, we've seen changes in the planning laws in the last ten years, you know.
All right, all right, Dave, thanks.
Thanks.
Ellie, you look like you're standing up there.
I'm a little bit lying in doubt. I am here on behalf of the, my name is Ellie Bondi, I live on Buffalo Road, I, there'll be an upcoming, um, I own a, a business downtown, and at, and as a business owner, I've become involved with the Mount Airy Main Street Association, and one of the things that we do annually, and I was trying to remember today when we started doing this, we have a week in September, it's probably been ten years that we've been doing it, when we have activities and speakers and presentations, and I am here to publicly invite all of you to attend, because I think this is one of the gems that we offer to the community that needs to have more publicity, and this is the forum that I've chosen, because so much history happened on the property that we walk on. I've had people tell me that every square foot of our town was stepped on by a soldier during the Civil War, every square foot, whether it be a Confederate or Union soldier, because we had both of them in, in our town. So, this is a, a week to talk about the history of our town, the history of our area. Monday evening, at Pine Grove, there'll be a woman from the Frederick Historical Society talking about what life was like, everyday life, and how the people had to sacrifice. On Tuesday evening, we're gonna talk about the War of eighteen twelve. A local author will be here talking about the writing of our National Anthem, and I've heard her do this presentation, and it is extremely powerful. You will never listen to that song again the same way. On Wednesday evening, I think you all know Brian Johnson, he will be presenting his, he, he plays a, an Indian, and he will be talking about the French and Indian War, which again, right here. On Thursday, a local author, he's from Harper's Ferry, he's written ten books about the Civil War, and his subject this time is the young man who lost his leg in the Civil War. He was the first amputee, which is amazing that he survived, because many of them did not, but he had been an engineering student, he went home and said, "I don't like this peg leg, I need a knee that moves and an ankle that moves," and he went and developed one and is the founder of the company that is the biggest creator of prosthetics in the United States. That would be the subject of Thursday night. And then on Saturday afternoon, with the permission of the town council, we would like to use this room, and we have a visitor coming from the Journey Through Hollowed Ground. We are right on the fringe of this, it is a ninety-mile area ranging from Gettysburg to Charlottesville, Virginia, which is incredible amount of history happened here, and she will be here to talk about that program and how we can get more involved and how you can be a volunteer. And following that, we always have a session where we invite longtime Mount Airy residents to be here, and it's always fun to talk to Oscar Baker and Helen Simpson and some of the folks who've lived here their entire lives about what life is like. This is a sample of the scavenger hunt. We ask people to walk up and down the street looking at the cornerstones of the buildings, and so, you are all invited to attend. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie.
Thank you.
Ellie, you're totally right about this being an awesome event that you put on, outstanding.
I'm Dick Swanson, eleven oh seven South Main Street, and I'm here with the Ethics Commission hat on. And this has been an issue, as you all know, that has languished for a while, we are non-compliance with the state, and I'm gonna get to the bottom line, which is, I believe that tonight you should take the proposed ordinance off the table, which you tabled, I believe, back in June, and reintroduce it for passage in September with the changes made to the disclosure section for elected officials that complies with state law. And why do I come tonight and say that? Well, first of all, I did a little, did a little research, there are seventy-six municipalities who are covered, either total, and we, like we are, or partially to have a, an exception, all the exceptions, by the way, only deal with the fact that they don't have to have a lobbying section, they still have to have the conflict of interest and disclosure sections of the law. Of the seventy-six, seventy-one have been determined to be approved, or their draft ordinances were approved by the State Ethics Commission and then subsequently passed. We are one of five remaining municipalities in the state of Maryland who is non-compliant, and that's been for three years. I'd also point out that it's been mentioned that, well, one of the reasons not to go into compliance with what the state wants is we do have problems with what the state law says, I agree, we do have problems, but the issue was, if you pass an ordinance that complies with the state law, does that mean that you lose your right to sue? And I would venture a guess to say, no, I'm not a lawyer, I think you still retain that right, I believe Tom said that that's, you don't automatically give up that right. So, I checked back on Rockville, and Rockville, as you all know, is where Lynn Board is, and she's been.
I thought she was Gaithersburg.
Well, she's been involved with Rockville.
Yes, Rockville's mayor, we actually, we all testified at the Capitol.
Right.
Rockville's mayor is very involved.
And, and Rockville passed their ordinance, and, and on the disclosure, I'm, I'm just gonna read one sentence of it for elected officials, it says, "A schedule of all interest in or with respect to any real property wherever located." And we have, I believe, a number of the municipalities that are concerned about the law that have gone ahead and passed something that does comply with state law and.
Dick, I'm sorry, did you say that was in the ordinance that, or the document that Rockville passed? Because Rockville mayor has actually brought up an example that she owns out-of-state property, she's very concerned about people knowing that her underage daughters may be staying at that property.
Or, or that her vacation home is empty this week because she's at a council meeting.
Yes, yes.
I got this, I got this off their.
Right.
Well, she, she must've, it must've happened over the mayor's objection, which, as we know, sometimes happens with a town council.
I objected, I.
It, it goes on with each one of those requirements and with similar verbiage consistent with state law, and has been approved by the State Ethics Commission. So, I just want to make the point that even if you pass an ordinance that complies with the state, it doesn't necessarily mean that we should give up our fight and our concerns about the law the way it is now. The Ethics Commission has maintained and continues to maintain, this is a legislative issue, not an issue between the town of Mount Airy and the State Ethics Commission, the State Ethics Commission is powerless to change the law. And finally, I point out why the urgency, well, if this ordinance can be passed in September that complies with the state law, we can send it in for their approval, because every October first, municipalities are required to certify that their ethics code meets state law. We have failed to certify over the last couple of years, and I don't think it would be wise to fail to certify for at least a third year in a row, and the reason is that that is probably one of those dates where it requires the State Ethics Commission to reexamine where they are with Mount Airy and eventually exercise their legal right to file suit to require Mount Airy to comply. I point out that if a suit is filed, that if we were to pass that ordinance as soon as possible after that, there's still a time period that's gonna take, cost the town, I would say, unnecessary legal fees and time and probably not be in the best interest of the citizens of Mount Airy. So, I'm gonna end just by urging you that.
Dick, do we have a, because you mentioned, we don't have one on the agenda for tonight.
Right.
So, the best we could really do would be introduce one in September.
Then you have to pass it as an emergency.
And either pass it as an emergency or pass it in October.
Well, October would be past the deadline.
I understand, I'm just saying, I'm just giving you a practical.
Couldn't, but we could just reintroduce what we.
Reintroduce what's out there and.
I mean, I, I'll reintroduce it under new business, what we already have on the table before.
Okay, and then we can modify and change it all we want, as long as we've got something for introduction.
Right, and I'd like to, just to consider then that the changes you make.
Okay, Councilman Everidge is, is reintroducing.
I'm, I'm going to under new business to give you time to pull up.
Dick, before you step away.
Yeah, when we get to new business, we'll, we'll go with that.
In fact, if you could get it printed out, that'd be great.
Dick.
Dick, is Gaithersburg one of the municipalities that has not passed an ordinance yet?
You know, I don't know specifically, I know one, Mount Airy, but the other four that are noncompliant, I don't know which ones they are.
I just know that they are in the forefront. They sponsored the State Bill, I think State Bill 98. I think that the council could get some good guidance if Tom reached out to them as well.
When we were down at MML, they had not passed yet.
Gaithersburg.
Right.
Yeah, Dick, like I said, I mean, you can hear our concerns. Our concerns are, and it doesn't apply to me, I don't have, I don't mind listing my property. It's all here in town. But I understand the concern about people like, well, they've got a vacation house, and anybody can come in and see they've got a vacation house. And, oh, they're not there because they're at a council meeting. This is a good time to break in. Or other personal details. You know, another one that I had was we have to list, for the public, every stock that you may own that may be in your stock portfolio.
Or your sublines or...
Well, I think, I'll tell you what, I'll email a copy of this section of the Rockville Code, and you can take it and send it to Tom. And I don't think that requires...
Do you think Rockville did, made some changes that might make it more palatable to us and got away with it?
The State Ethics Commission has kind of made some interpretations.
Okay, well, that's good.
softened.
That's good. Well, maybe, maybe Rockville's passed something that we can live with.
So won't look at what they have.
All right, well, that's good. Let's move forward.
The Mount Airy Ethics Commission agrees with the town council's concerns. This is really a matter of pursuing changes in that law that would satisfy everybody, that it really needs to be done in the legislature. And that to continue being noncompliant with the law dealing with the State Ethics Commission is just not going to work and eventually is going to come down on us.
Okay, when we get to new business, Chris is going to introduce what we have already. So it's on the agenda for next month. And I'm going to, I will say right now, go ahead and second that. In the meantime, you can send around what you've got, and we can see how they compare. And when it comes to the table, we can always amend.
Thanks, Dick.
Thanks. And Dick, as always, appreciate your work. And I learned something. I didn't know your first name was Arnold.
Like everyone...
I always call him Bill, okay?
I can only blame my parents. As soon as I graduated high school and went to college, I changed to William, and so I could do Bill. But then when you have a last name like Butts, you've got to do something.
Who's this got Arnold Butts? And I was like, okay, that must be...
It's supposed to be more impressive. I'm here tonight as Chair of the Mount Airy Planning and Zoning Commission. We have just finished at least three years, actually, I think it's probably more than that, a fairly intensive effort to attempt to update the town master plan. And we're pleased that we're finally very, very close to handing that over to the council. So you can take the time you need to review it. And we tried to release that to you in stages and chapters for that very purpose. We reached out and invited all of the town commissions to contribute to it, and most did. We used, made extensive use out of the most recent comprehensive surveys that were done in the town. All of that information was called and utilized. We had multiple public hearings. We had a very productive session on December the 4th. We had a ninety-day period where...
Phil, I would even say you guys beat this thing to death.
We spent a lot of time on it, but it's awfully darn important when you're looking at a vision for the town's enhancement and development over the next eight to ten years, okay? And we're about to let you, you know, go through that in great detail and ask whatever questions and justification and rationale for why we recommended this or that. In a fraction of that three years, our county to the west, Frederick County, has approved developmental proposals that represent approximately 10,000 homes. That's the equivalent of ten, of three Mount Arys, okay? We feel, and we're very concerned, gravely concerned, that's too much development too quickly of an approval process in too concentrated an area. We're concerned about the multiple impacts that that development will have in central Maryland. We're concerned about the residents who live there. We're concerned about the multiple impacts it will have on Mount Airy. In comparison to the process that we're trying to follow in terms of considered, balanced, reasonable development for our community, we feel there's a very different process going on there. And it scares us and it concerns us. To the extent that we drafted a letter, I sent it to you out, apologies that it came so late in the day-to-day. We've been going over it, we've been trying to massage it and make sure that it's appropriate in tone, that it's professional. It's hard not to get emotional about these kinds of issues when we're talking about potentially damaging quality of life in Maryland irreparably, okay? We wanted to share it with you appropriately ahead of time. We wanted you to be aware of our concerns. We wanted to hear your feedback. We very, very much feel it needs to be sent. And the purpose of sending that is simply to open a channel of dialogue and discussion with Frederick County. That county and multiple communities, including Mount Airy, share jurisdiction in this area. We think there are multiple issues that need to be discussed collectively. We're not sure at all that adequate study has been done prior to these projects being approved, okay? We'd love to hear what the study's consisted of, what the potential impact has been measured and projected to be, okay? There's a lot of concerns to it. But we're concerned enough that we felt we, something needs to be said, especially on the eve of us handing off to you the proposed Mount Airy Plan Update, a draft going forward. It would be hypocritical of us not to say something when what we see over there is vastly different than what we feel the planning process should consist of for our community. So I'm here tonight to say, here's the draft that we've prepared. Very, very much want to hear your feedback. Would like nothing better than your willingness to co-sponsor that with us. But regardless, the idea here is to open up a dialogue with the county commissioners in Frederick for the purpose of talking about these kinds of issues.
Well, why don't we just go around the table? One of the guys on the end, want to start or...
I'll start. I'm very uncomfortable with this, okay? We just, a month ago, had an election. These same people were on the ballot, and they will be on the ballot in November. They won. So, you know, I don't know what that says, okay? But that doesn't have any effect on us here now when we get to Mount Airy. I'm not happy about this, it is what it is. We, I don't, I don't see what we have any effect by sending a letter, but send it.
Chris?
So I'd like to ask the council for consent, consensus or consent to send a letter to the, to Frederick County. And then Dave Dunn, I'll put you on the spot. Dave Dunn, our representative...
He's going to stop coming to the meetings.
We're very fond of Dave Dunn.
Yes.
About the fire fund, I'll leave that one later. Dave, what I'm requesting is that at the next, as Chairman Butts said, in the spirit of cooperation and understanding planning process, our master plans, planning processes need to be linked together. Dave, what I'm going to ask is that our next Town Planning Commission meeting, instead of the letter, assuming the letter gets sent falling on deaf ears, I'd like to ask you to have either Jim Google or Gary Hesson to come to our Planning Commission meeting. So our Planning Commission can talk to your director, which is Jim Google, try to understand how your master plan was done, what impacts were looked at, and particularly the roads and things. So can you, would you make that happen for us, please?
If you can just send me an email with the date of the next meeting.
Great. Okay, and...
Yeah, that'd go a long way to actually have someone come and answer your questions.
Right, so, but, but getting back to the matter at hand, so we'll do that. And I'd ask the council for unanimous consent to send this letter as written to Frederick, to Frederick County.
All right, I guess I'm next, next in order. My concern with the letter was, I read it with, I read it as having too much emotion. And I did not read it as a, hey, let's sit down and talk about this. I read this as a, we think you're nuts, okay? If you understand what I'm saying? That was my read on it, that this was not a, you know, hey, can we sit down and talk about this? This was a, hey, we think you're nuts, and do you want to talk about that? So that would, that's my, that's my concern with the letter. Pat?
Good idea to bring the planning director in. I can tell you, I sat at a hearing for about four hours and watched that planning director respond to numerous citizen comments and requests for justifications that went on and on and on. To bring him here is going to mean nothing. This guy has fielded these things and batted these things more than Babe Ruth hits baseballs. It's not going to serve any purpose. Do I think it's crazy? Absolutely. This is insane. This is three Mount Arys on our borders. This is insane. Not only that, you've loosened APFO restrictions. There's, you've made it irreversible. This is not in the best interest of the people, and that's who we're supposed to serve. I not only think you should send this letter, I think you should want a full-page ad in every major publication that's out there. That's my opinion.
Scott?
So my opinion is, I support sending a letter. I think to echo what Peter says is that some of the questions, I mean, specifically the first one, how does this glut of approved development? I think toning it down a little bit, but still getting the same message across, will be more conducive to trying, having a mutual discussion with them. I think that Councilman Everidge's idea of having their Department Head of Planning show up to answer the questions, while I don't agree with the mayor, that it will be useless. I think it will help Mount Airy understand perspective of where are they coming from and why are they doing the thing. So we'll answer the questions. It may not change anything, but I think it would be useful. I think the letter should be sent, but just changing those couple things so that the emotions out of it says more factual.
Okay.
I would not be against sending a letter, but I think there's decisions already made. And I agree with Councilman Everett. I think they should come down and explain why maybe they did it, under what circumstances. But decisions already been made, and I'm not against sending a letter.
Has a decision been made? I mean, we're still...
Well, Bill, I guess, I guess the letter's coming from planning. So you don't really necessarily need council approval. I think you kind of heard some of us were like, tone it down a little. I don't think, I heard, didn't hear anybody say, don't send it.
No, he's, the planning can send it, and they've done so in the past. He's asking to elevate that and get the backing of the town council. You have my backing. I'm going to join, the mayor will jointly sign it.
Everybody said sign it. We'll sign it.
I'll sign it.
But there's some that want changes. I don't, I'm fine with as is.
Well, I mean, I've given my advice that I would tone it down, you know?
So would I, but I mean, if you guys want to send it out...
You know, I don't know that, I don't know that I would stand in the way of it. But like I said, my recommendation would be tone it down because it's a little...
Did you send Leslie's version or your first version?
This, this is a combination. Her, her, the vast majority of her recommendations are worked into this. We reached out and all members of the commission could contribute to it.
So could I ask for consensus that the council backed the letter with the provision that the language is toned down somewhat, and the council gives the Chair of Planning the discretion to tone it down?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'll do that.
So the count...
Yeah, I saw everybody nod their heads, since it's just kind of a consensus thing.
And it's a council, but it's a council behind the letter.
Well, the council and planning and...
Mayor.
Everybody.
Do we want to redraft in the closing to represent both the Chair of Planning and the...
Well, I think, I think, Chris said we would leave it up to you to tone it down.
Yeah, but the council's giving...
Yeah, you change your closing to say the Planning Commission, Town Council, and Mayor of Mount Airy.
Yeah.
Good. Excellent.
And we'll send the date to Dave Dunn. Thank you.
And, and we'll share the toned-down version for...
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
But if I could ask, Dave, the voting is done, and I really should know, but I don't. Is it complete? Is it a done deal? Is there any more public hearings? Are they taking public input?
Most of these projects, the DRA has already been, they've had public hearings, multiple public hearings on all of them. And most of these projects, it's been approved.
They're approved.
They are approved. There are still some out there, but the ones, the main ones, like Lansdale and Dale and those have been approved, so.
And they're irreversible. There was mechanisms put in to make them irreversible.
Well, that's what developer rights and agreements do. It lays down parameters. It's a contract, I guess.
Yeah, well, we saw, we saw a few years ago, Carroll County tried to kind of reverse a few things, and that's why they own a big piece of ground on the outside of town that they had to buy as part of a law.
So if you're sending these letters just to the commissioners, it'll do no good. It's going to sit on their desk, quite honestly. What's it going to do? I say put in the newspaper that the town of Mount Airy is opposed.
We could do that, but again...
Well, there were numerous public hearings. I don't know if anybody came for those.
I came to them before, and I plan to come again.
That's what those are for.
But after four hours of waiting, when they got through the testimony, it was, there was a legal part at the beginning, and we didn't even get to the testimony. At 10 o'clock, I had to walk out.
Well, the only thing I might add with this board is that elections have consequences. And this was part of their campaign and their platform that they ran on, all this. And that's what they're going for.
That's true. Councilman came in a good point.
So apparently, you know...
They do a good job with other things.
Candidates that were of growth, they all lost. And the ones that were on the other side won, so that says something about...
So...
It's all, it's a fact.
It's true.
Thank you.
That is true.
Thank you.
But there's still a county executive race that's open.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep. Bruce Wallace, President, Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company. I just want to say for the record that as the Chief Executive Officer of the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, I'm the only, and I emphasize only, individual that may speak on behalf of the fire department. If any citizens listening or anyone interested...
So you mean when Jeff comes up here and gives us the report?
That's right.
It's, okay.
I can authorize that, and I do. And I also authorize the PIO to speak on behalf of the department. But as far as legally speaking, on behalf of the department, according to the Constitution of the Department, I'm the only individual still authorized to speak. I want that to be reflected in the record. And I also want it to be reflected in the record that I have not spoken with the petitioner in any manner related to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on. Ordinance 2014-13. Bunch Amendment, Adoption for the Inflow and Infiltration Project Not Completed in Fiscal 14 Being Moved to 15. This is a simple, this is basically a simple shift of...
I'd like to make a motion that happens.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we've got a second on that. Is there any discussion on this? This is kind of one of those paper pushing issues. I don't see discussion on, Bob?
Well, just, just, the infill and inflow is such a problem, okay? That, for example, this, this past month, our average daily, average daily, what is it, MG?
MGD.
MGD.
Millions a gallon a day.
Was sixty-six or .667 million gallons per day, okay? Last year or last month, when we were having those heavy rains, we were up to 1.187. We were close to the threshold, and that was the average, the average daily. So it's, we have to, this, this project has to happen. Right, Barney?
Agreed.
All right. I hear no other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I've heard everybody say aye, so I'm sure Lisa will pick up on that.
I'm told we have 550 manhole covers throughout the town of Mount Airy.
And they all leak.
And they all leak.
How many are there? Do you fix them?
Two.
All right. The signed ordinance was here for adoption. I think it was determined, Lisa, we just passed 2014-13 unanimously. The signed ordinance, Tom has indicated to us that that needs a public hearing. So that's going to be on for next month at 7:15. The signed ordinance. Bob?
Can I ask for one small change?
Well, if we're asking for changes, I got some.
Ah, okay, okay.
Yeah, I would say if we're going to, yeah, if we're going to change, let's change it then and then now. Instead, then, because it's...
The only comment I will ask is...
Otherwise, we end up discussing it tonight, and then we'd end up spending an hour discussing it next month as well.
The only comment I will make is it was stated that planning gave a favorable recommendation for this ordinance. Did they see it in its current form that's being presented to this body?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, it's on next month's agenda. All right, Resolution 2014-3, the Carroll County Hazard Mitigation. This is here for adoption. I will move that we adopt this. Do I have a second? I got a second. Is there any discussion or any...
Any questions? We have emergency staff...
We have emergency staff here from Carroll County.
Do we? Can they introduce themselves since they came all the way down?
Yeah, come on up.
Scott.
You're welcome.
Good evening, I'm Valerie Hawkins, I'm Carroll County Emergency Management Assistant Coordinator.
Thanks. You know, if we'd known you were here, I would have pulled this up earlier. So sorry for making you sit through all this.
No problem at all. If anybody has any questions specifically...
I do. Who's replacing Jim Weeds?
Jim Weeds' replacement is Doug Brown.
Doug Brown. And I just resent some FEMA information to the council. And I would like to announce that Councilman Phoebus is the first councilman I know to successfully graduate one of the 200B. I think that's one of his...
100 and 200B.
Well, he took 200B. And it was a nice test at the end of it. Should have studied the chapter better before I took that test. So we are working on that. We're also, Mr. Phoebus has a keen interest in emergency management. I believe you attended one of our roundtable workshops, and we do have a committee set up here that the council may not be aware of. But we will be reinstituting that. Hopefully Ken will take the lead, and we're going to eventually do a tabletop exercise here in Mount Arie. Jim Weeds was very active with us, but I know there's some out in the community that are very interested in this, and we'll do a tabletop exercise. So thank you for all the guidance you've been giving us over the years. Doug Brown.
Any other discussion?
Now, with that, can you just explain the mechanics of why we adopt this resolution every year so we can apply for FEMA funding resources?
Actually, it's not every single year. It feels that way because it is a very large plan to work on. But it's technically every five years that it's required. The whole idea behind hazard mitigation in a nutshell is to head off issues that may arise due to a disaster. This particular plan only addresses natural disasters. Obviously, we all know that there's a lot more different types of disasters than just natural disasters. But FEMA only requires for a mitigation plan that you address natural disasters. What FEMA really wants, and it makes a lot of sense, is each jurisdiction that is applying for either pre-disaster mitigation funding or funding under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program has demonstrated a commitment to mitigation, to analyzing the hazards that might affect the community and figuring out ways if and when funding becomes available and within good governance and fiscal responsibility. You can take some steps to head off those issues ahead of time so you maybe don't have as big a disaster within a disaster later on down the line. That's the whole idea. FEMA requires each jurisdiction that applies to either one of those grant programs for mitigation to have a current mitigation plan adopted in place. The Carroll County Plan, Commissioners adopted it officially in March. FEMA has approved the plan. It's very complicated. There's actually a couple of different levels. But Carroll County has adopted it. The majority of jurisdictions here in the county have adopted it. And once it's adopted by each jurisdiction, then if, God forbid, we have a disaster tomorrow before the county, and we have a disaster declaration, pre-disaster mitigation funding may be available. That enables each jurisdiction that's adopted it to go through the process and apply for some of that funding.
Thanks.
Which we have done in fact.
Just a, just a question. It seems like a lot of work. Why wouldn't the state just do it as a blanket for the whole state? Why do each one little place you gotta do this? Why wouldn't it just be a blanket for the whole state?
The state does do a mitigation plan, but because this state is so varied in its hazards, what applies specifically to the eastern shore, for example, are not the same hazards that we have here. So it's, the state applies for a portion of the funding. And for a good example, we had a declared disaster here in February. The state receives, the, the state actually receives mitigation funding if it's requested as part of a disaster declaration. That's something that the state can ask for at the state level. The state is actually the administrator, for a better, lack of a better term, for any mitigation funding that comes from FEMA as a result of a disaster, of a declared disaster. But in order for any jurisdiction or municipality to apply and receive the funding, have, have adopted, either have your own mitigation plan, because you can, you know, Mount Arie can certainly do their own. It's, that's an issue, whether you really want to. There's a huge amount of work that goes into it, but you certainly can. It's an option. Or you can adopt the Carroll County Plan, because it's a multi-jurisdictional plan. Then you're eligible to apply for some of that funding that's coming from FEMA through the state and down. But it's a separate application. So for example, for the funding that just came back through from the snowstorms, each jurisdiction or each entity that wanted to apply for reimbursement has to do it separately. The county doesn't do it on behalf of everybody. Each corporation does their own, each entity. So that's why there's a lot of separation in it. It does seem like it would be easier to just do it, to just do it as a blanket plan, but they really want the, the detail, and they want each jurisdiction to show that they've really analyzed their hazards and figured out where, basically where best to put the money when you have it to get mitigation projects to go forward. Make the best use of the funds that you have.
Any more discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks for coming down. We appreciate it.
All right. We've got the Charter Amendment, Resolution 2014-2, Citizen Recall, which is actually, I guess, is this here for reintroduction?
Right. So I'll introduce Charter Amendment, Resolution 2014-2. Before I ask for a second, a couple bits of background. The reason why I'm introducing it is because I believe this is a desirable democratic procedure whereby citizens can remove elected officials through a referendum. Second reason, the Charter Amendment we've already passed, in a sense, is superfluous because the Maryland Constitution already provides for removal, suspension and removal of elected officials for misconduct resulting in criminal conviction. So although we've passed something already and listed a bunch of crimes, the Maryland Constitution already provides for removal based on that.
Well, we passed before, I think, had things that were not crimes as well.
Besides crimes.
Besides crimes.
They were not criminal, they were not criminal reasons.
One was the only one that dealt with crime.
Okay. So part of it is superfluous. And then another reason, because I've gotten comments from citizens, is what we've passed before, the petition goes through the council, and the council has to have a hearing and provide written findings as to whether or not probable cause has been established. So, so in other words, what we passed before, citizens go out, do a petition, bring it to the council, and then the council looks, could look at it and say, "Oh, yeah, no." And then throw it out the window. It's not a democratic process. That gives the council the ability to override what the people do. So with that, I'll introduce Resolution 2014-2. I'll ask for a second.
Much to much to grant.
Chris, I'm only not doing it, Chris, because I want to hear from, I personally want to hear from elections to see what our timings are before I move forward on anything else.
I've got changes that I'll introduce. If I can get a second, I've got changes I introduced based on input from Chair of the Board of Elections.
Why would we accept the introduction? If you have changes, you should put them in the document and reintroduce that.
Well, unfortunately, the changes came to me before this was put on the table.
I understand, but if you have something that you want to put in front of us to accept, those changes should be in their entirety, not...
Okay, that's fair.
That would just be my, if, if, I guess, put it again, bring it back.
We haven't even read what the changes are, so we're...
Because I, I have concerns about what we've passed already and what we're looking at now based on the timing that the Election Commission... So I don't want to really look at anything till I know what I can do.
Fair enough. So I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw this once again.
Okay. Although anybody else is, can second. I'm just, that's just me.
Unless I get a second.
I think Bob was looking the same way.
The question I'll ask from the Chair, though, we did request, based on the law that was passed and is enacted now, for feedback. Do you have a timeline of when that feedback will come? Which was the forecause?
No, I haven't, because it was the month last month that we did it with the carnival and everything. And I need to get it from Debbie. But what I identified in the draft that Chris asked me to look at is essentially what I'm going to present to the full commission. And it's really clarification, and it allows for the fact that if we hit a period of time when it's a blackout to get the registered, the voter rolls, how that will be handled. And also, the biggest concern is, I expressed that the last thing that has to be changed, at least I feel it has to be changed, is the, all the, the approval of the signatures cannot rest with one person in the way it is now as the Chair of the Board of Elections.
Okay.
Right. I remember I had concern that it said that, I guess it was the voters, registered voters as of the day the petition is turned in or something. And I'm like, I don't think there's any possible way that can be done.
Right, yeah, yeah. All that is addressed.
Yeah. The one clarification, like, the draft that Councilman Everidge sent you, was that the actual law that was passed? Or is that what he's proposing, which are two different things?
It's what he is proposing, but it has a lot of what is in the original document because he amended it. So I'm just going to take those same changes and move them over to the, because I did the whole document.
Yeah. I would just ask that you look at what has been already passed and provide input to that, just because it does differ from what we've seen.
He just sent it to me the other day. I did it to him because he asked me to do it.
Understand.
It's my opinion, not actually the board. We haven't met because of the carnival.
Yeah.
Board of Elections is three and an alternate, correct?
Right, that's correct.
Well, two of you are here.
That's right.
Go get to work.
We, we, we've been discussing, we've been discussing it.
Now, but I appreciate if you could do that to the council.
And they're just really administrative changes in there.
Right. Right. And when you brought that up last month, and I looked at this from myself having been involved with some of the election stuff, I was like, you're right. There's no way we can make these times. This needs to be fixed.
Right, you can't make the times. It's too restrictive, like in the wording and how the ballot has to be set up because if we use electronic voting, it may not be on the side. It may be just like, you know, so I've asked all this...
Right. I think, I think we're agreeable with those inputs to tailor.
Chris is, Chris is going to sort that out and bring it back next month.
Right. Well, Debbie will be, or somebody can send me a word document of what is, exists now, and I can go through it and just superimpose those changes on it because...
Tom, can I request, do you have that already? That you could just send him what has been passed or...
Yeah, send it to me as a word document. And we can make the work.
You've already written it here, because they were just...
Was this?
Right. Yeah, awesome.
All right, so I'll go back to the ethics. I'll go back, fix, make the modifications, get it to the council, so they look at it. But again, I'll ask council's opinion.
Oh, my God.
What I'm trying to do is, what I'm trying to do is, trying to do is recall, negate what we already passed, basically eliminate all of these conditions and just do it so that citizens can recall elected officials. I mean, am I going to get a second? I'm asking if I'm going to get a second on that.
You know, I mean, you, you know, you'll get a second for me to discuss it. You know, A, I'll wait till I see it, and B, I kind of like the two-tiered system.
Okay, that's fine.
You know what I mean? Where we had, we had a lower percentage for cause and a higher percentage for without cause.
Including the, but that leaves in the current language that essentially allows the council to negate the petition.
Well, that would show up, well, that, I'm not saying, we clearly need to change what we've already enacted.
Okay.
I mean, that's what we just discussed with, with Bruce. What we've already enacted will need to be changed as well.
Okay.
But I personally, from my, my, just my perspective, I like the two-tiered system. You know, like 20% to 30%, one no cause, one for cause.
Okay. Thank you.
But I didn't hear from anybody else, but let's, let's move on to unfinished business. All right, we've got Wildwood Park. Barney, you were going to give us a, just, I think, a recommendation of what you found over there in Wildwood Park. Is anybody here? Did anybody here for Wildwood Park? Okay.
So basically, we did a little research on all the plaits, all of the Public Works Agreements that started from Section 4, which is when the pond was added. And just going through the background, the storm pond was added with Section 4.
Can I, can I, you're not going to read this whole document, are you?
No, no.
Executive summary.
Yeah, if I could ask for, one of the things that I'd be interested in, and I don't know if the council is, it's certainly their meeting, but I'd be interested to break it down. One of, one of their points was that other people impact them, and they're paying for other people. So what I would want to know, just in a real condensed version, is who else flows into their storm water management pond? And what do the Public Works Agreements say?
Okay. All right, so...
And how much this is going to cost us on a yearly basis?
But would, would we even care about the cost until we find out if it's something we should consider?
Mayor says he does not care about the cost. I'm just kidding.
Would we care about the cost at this point before we even know? Because at this point, I don't even know if we need a car. I don't care what the car costs. I only know if I need a car.
We need research costs at this, at this point yet.
At some point, if you thought we would, had some...
All right. So again, in 1998, Section 4 added the pond. It included five outfalls, which basically collected all the water that's uphill that normally would drain downhill anyhow, right? Part of that water is the Lorian Center. That Lorian, just for the record, I mean, that is Lot 36 of Wildwood Park, Section 4. It is part of Wildwood Park.
So it's part of them.
So they're part of the HOA, then?
That I can't, I can't answer. I, I don't...
It's part of the Developer's Public Works Agreement.
Because if they're paying into the HOA, you know, that might, then it's understandable that they're dumping in there.
So I, I don't have information between the HOA and who's included, that sort of thing.
Because they want to hear they're a lot in that development.
Right. So this is maybe, you know, one different property, I guess, but it is part of Section 4. So essentially, I mean, they didn't add anything outside. It's not, it's not a different commercial entity that, that was not part of this Wildwood Park.
So everything going into the storm water management pond is part of this...
Section 4.
Section subdivision.
And Sections 5 and 6, basically, Section 5 added a sixth outfall. But again, it's, it's the same water that was streaming downhill. Now, because you're adding an impervious surface, you have to collect it, put it into the pond, and treat it properly and try to recharge some of that water into the ground.
So you said Section 5 is emptied into that pond as well?
And, and then along with that is Section 6, which just drains into the section 5, drains, all goes into the same...
Because from, what we were hearing was that other people were impacting them, and that was cause for concern that they were paying for other people, but this is their community.
Well, no, but it sounds like Section 4 is the only one that pays. Is that correct?
That I don't know. Again, I don't know how the...
Well, I think he testified last time, nobody's paying yet, already.
Huh?
Nobody has paid yet.
Not yet.
Right.
Not yet.
Nobody has paid anything yet.
You're right. They're worried about when they have to pay.
Yeah, because it's still burning on, right?
Yeah.
So we reviewed all the final plaits of Sections 4 through 6. The one plat, Section 5, Plat 3, does confirm that the parcel C, meaning the pond, does, does in fact is owned by the Canterbury Group, which is the developer. No other place through those plaits does, which is where we would normally see a dedication, does it dedicate that parcel to anybody, whether it be the HOA or the town. It's just not mentioned. We looked through all the Public Works Agreements through Section 4 through 6. We looked through all the public works agreements through Section Four through Six. The one, again, through, through the public works agreements, there's no mention of parcel C being dedicated or anything else, so that's not even a part of the public works.
Is that unusual?
Again, I would normally see it in the plat, at least, but probably in the, if it was in the plat, it should be mentioned.
Here's, well, my question would be, if there's no mention of it being dedicated to anybody, then wouldn't it just remain the property of Canterbury Group, and wouldn't they have to pay to maintain it in perpetuity?
Wow, oops. I mean, my, I'm not drawing any conclusions, I'm just telling you what I'm finding.
Okay, but that's, I'm just...
Is that odd?
It seems odd.
Normally, normally, if anyone's, I remember seeing it either went to us, or it said it became part of the HOA.
Oh, interesting, so it's...
To be dedicated is what it'll read.
Yeah, so this is not saying either way.
Right.
That's a dilemma.
You gotta say, I'm not a lawyer, everybody else is said.
Tom and I can't do that. But, but however, Tom makes all legal recommendations to the town, that's what his malpractice coverage is for, not mine.
Thank you.
I always tell, I tell my malpractice carrier every year that I do not make legal, give the town legal advice.
And then, also, the other odd thing, I guess, is that Section Six, in the PWA alone, not in the plaits, again, the plaits are where I would normally look for it, but it mentions a dedication to the town of two parcels that are more or less open space parcels. Normally, that would stay with that community for maintenance, so that, that too is, is odd.
That's odd. So the issue appears to be that it's not dedicated to anybody, that's more so the issue than originally what we thought.
At this point, yeah, yeah. And, and looking at that pond, I mean, we do have ponds of our own, but this is a little bit bigger than, than our average-sized pond, it's also...
It's a, it's a lake.
It's also a heavily wooded area.
Yeah, and it's water-scented all the time.
It's, it's a lake, and it's full.
It will require some maintenance and cost.
Can we give it to Larry Hushammer and make it an amenity?
Fill it up, put fish in it.
What's the, now, you have a question on my part, what's our policy for ponds like this?
We take some, we don't take some.
Depends on what's in a public works agreement.
Yeah.
It's what's in a public works agreement.
It depends on what's in the agreement.
That's what I wanted to know.
For example, in my community, there's a, there's a dry one, there's actually two dry ones, that the town does mow from time to time, they're dry, so they don't need fencing and everything, but we have no HOA. So it was written in originally that the town was gonna take over these two...
That's an older development.
Dirt piles.
Well, we have three in Summit Ridge, after nineteen ninety-eight development, nineteen seventy development, and we don't take care of barns.
Summit Ridge doesn't take care of it.
Right.
Now, we have, we have Summit Village Gate and Twin Ridge, and there's a contractor, in fact, the town actually doesn't mow them, I don't think.
Now, you're right.
We have a contractor on there, that's right.
There's a contractor to mow the ponds.
Right.
So...
Second question I had was...
But, but there are quite a few that the town doesn't own, that the HOA has maintained.
Is there? Because we just named all the biggest HOAs, Nottingham?
There's storm water management ponds that we don't own, and that we do not maintain.
What about Nottingham?
But, but like Twin Ridge and Village Gate, I mean, we do maintain those ponds. There's a number of them.
Right.
Well, that's true.
What about Nottingham?
We've got Nottingham.
Typically, do not.
What do we do in Nottingham?
That's big. Nottingham, we do have all the...
We own Nottingham? I'd like to know what we don't do.
But if you look in our budget last year, if you look in our budget last year, we, we mow thirty-one in it.
Thirty-something of them.
And there's fifty-seven thousand dollars here to mow them.
Right.
Right?
What don't we do?
Fifty-seven thousand.
So, but, Pat, something that you just said, that Monica just said, we don't maintain, it sounds like the general trend is we maintain residential, we do not do commercial residential.
Oh, we do not.
Now, if you take this development, they've got a commercial business, the Lorian...
True.
Retirement Center, which is five point six acres, compared to the rest of the citizens' home, which I can't get an acreage on it, it's very, very small, so now you have a hybrid issue, where you've got Lorian...
You're saying the bulk of that development may be commercial?
It might be, because if you look at the size, it's, well, I can't tell...
It's a big chunk.
It's a big chunk. So that needs, so that, if our policy is not to do commercial industrial, we've got a hybrid situation here.
Yep.
It's almost as if we...
We're in our uncharted territory.
Well, maybe we'll let Tom give us a decision on, you know, what we even can do, because our, our code allows the HOA to turn it over to us, but it's not the HOAs, so I'm not even sure we can get to step one.
Yeah, the HOA doesn't have to do it either.
Because it doesn't get, it doesn't get turned over to the HOA, it remains the property of Canterbury. So I guess maybe we need to let Tom come back to us with some opinions on that, because what we were looking at it from the perspective was, it was gonna become the HOAs, and here's their provision for how they could come to us and say, you want it, but it's not theirs, and it's not necessarily gonna be theirs.
So bottom line is, we're gonna wait for Tom to come back to us.
Right, yeah. They may be able, they may be able to reject it if Birmingham Office, if Canterbury Office is doing it, they may just say, forget it, we don't want it.
Just for past practices, can you send Tom a list of storm water management ponds that we do not maintain, outside of commercial and industrial, because we know we don't do any of those?
I don't, I don't think we have a list of the ones that we do not maintain, the county may, I'll see if they have.
Yeah, we, we do have a list of the ones we do maintain.
There are a lot of commercial, industrial, townhouses.
Well, we know that, take, take that off, I know, take...
Yeah, but they're, they're townhouses, we don't typically do those.
We do not maintain, right.
If, if Tom feels that, would be helpful, I don't know. Tom's secure, that means he probably doesn't.
Chris, Chris, you wanna introduce something under new business, it's not under new business?
Yes, I'd like to introduce ordinance two thousand eleven dash seven, Chapter Thirteen, entitled Ethics.
And I will second that, and Dick is gonna get us some stuff to deal with that, so we can maybe look at that next month. All right, that was a good one. Next up, Town and Country Agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
County.
Sorry.
At some point, I thought it got re-designated with a two thousand thirteen number, not that it, I guess it matters.
Actually, this...
It only gives me concern that what's been introduced isn't the latest.
How do I, I should introduce it as two thousand and fourteen dash...
Whatever the new number is.
Absolutely.
We're in two thousand thirteen minutes, and that's what I, that's the last one I found in that book.
Okay.
But from a legal perspective, are we okay with two thousand and thirteen, or do we need to introduce it?
No, I think you would introduce it as a two thousand and fourteen dash whatever number we're up to.
Okay.
My concern was...
Chris is, Chris is reintroducing it with whatever the next number in the sequence will be, and I'm seconding that.
Two thousand and fourteen dash X.
Question mark.
That would be fifteen.
Okay, whatever that next number is.
All right, so I'll introduce it to me, this is two thousand and fourteen dash fifteen.
Okay, yeah, whatever, whatever.
You mean, you seconded on that?
I seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, Town and Country Agreement.
County.
I'm sorry, Town and County Agreement.
Which, which I have reviewed.
This is our, our standard Town-County.
It is.
We forget every year. Anything we need to know?
It's identical in language, other than the numbers, which are slightly different.
I will move that we authorize the mayor to sign this fiscal year, two thousand fifteen, Town-County Agreement.
Second, it's turn.
I'll second it. Now, I was first, that one.
Okay, everybody seconded that one. You can put down Bob if you need somebody, because...
It was his turn.
Because I was looking at him. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, unanimous. Street closing request, cornerstone building dedication. This nor, these, well, these normally come from, streets and roads can, so...
We never go as...
Okay, well, I, you can see this, they're, they're requesting that...
The district's short, or, 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 about ten minutes, and so...
Well, the council can do it, right, just...
All affected property owners to sign.
Um, it's because there's a...
There is none?
There's, there's, we're not open at that time on Saturday, that's what he was indicating, that's during Saturday, and I think wherever just located that...
That's Saturday, it's not gonna be closed, just one side of it, not, not gonna be shut down.
It's downstream.
Well, he can, he can do that and bring it back to September, and that's what you require.
I'm just saying, I saw that signatures of all property owners affected by the street.
This is, okay, and I see where this is, they're walking down the other side past Burger King, down to what used to be the church, which they've now taken over as a lodge.
Right.
And I think you are probably correct, if the street is actually going to be closed, they are gonna have to get the signatures of all the property owners that are along that street. I mean, I realize...
Does that even back it up? Because there's only one ingress and egress.
There's only one way in and out.
So they have to have everybody sign it.
Right, there's only one way in and out, so...
They're only requesting one side of the street.
In order to expedite this...
You can't close one side.
In order to expedite this, how about we just ask the Maryland State Police to help coordinate for ten minutes to let traffic go around?
They are, the state police is getting...
I'm fine with that.
Absolutely.
I'll just make a note, Maryland State Police will help coordinate the...
Right, right, now, Ken Scott, he's just gonna talk to the police about somehow having them assist, and just getting these guys...
Yeah, for ten minutes.
Okay, you know, just, just to get these guys down this one side of the street for just a few minutes.
Okay.
You know, whatever they need to do, I mean, they may need to stop the traffic for a few minutes, but, but you're right, Pat.
But it's not close the street.
We're not closing the street.
But if, you know, to, to, to do the closing, they would have to get everybody back there in that, that whole, kind of, so, heights, to sign this, because they're locked in. But if they're only going down half the street, the police can let people go on one side.
We said around ten minutes, we said, just ten minutes.
Tell them they dodged a bullet on that one.
Yeah.
So what's the verdict? Just tell them to go ahead and do it?
You were the one that pointed out.
Well, the mayor's gonna talk to the police to, to sort out getting it done, so...
Read that here.
Reduction in bonding, Wildwood Park, Sections...
Okay, that was in our package here.
So we're releasing almost all the bond?
It's everything but, I think, five thousand dollars, because there's a little bit of erosion down the, where the access drive is, other than that, the pond's been okay.
Well...
We have a motion?
The same, same pond, yes.
So this is the pond that we're just talking about?
Yeah, I think we should hold off on this, because of the, isn't this, yeah, right, Monica, this, this is the whole pond, we don't, the whole pond, HOA...
We don't know what the state is.
Isn't this feed into this?
Well...
This is it.
But...
You have bonds on Section Six.
Their work is done, I'm sure they're holding some money to pay the contractor, waiting for, reduce the bonds.
Well, I mean, the real question is, is their work done on the pond, they still own the pond, so it's not even an issue, really.
The work is done, correct.
Yeah, yeah, work's been done on the pond for years.
Yeah, work's been done on the pond, that's all we're concerned with, I mean, really, from my perspective at this point.
Right.
And, and they own the pond.
Right.
So the question of who they're gonna, gonna give, what happens to it?
Just, just to clarify, you said they own it, so they're responsible for cutting the grass, so we solved that one already?
At this point, yes.
Actually, yes, because it's not been transferred, it's not gonna be transferred.
Because they've actually put in, I think, a temporary...
Okay, so we solved that one, and that pond is full of water, and it stays full of water.
Well, they've, they've actually put in a temporary access slot between two of the houses, they can get back there, because they're done working on it there. I've heard about that from some of the residents over there.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I mean, I don't see, I mean, I think we need to do what our task is.
Right.
Do we have a motion?
I got it, I'll make a motion.
Bob's got it, I'll say, moving releases recommended.
Yes, releases recommended, forty-six, two oh eight.
Do we have a second?
Second. Tom, it says forty-one, not forty-six, correct?
Oh, discussion forty-six, you are correct, forty-one, two oh eight.
Forty-one, two oh eight, and we got, Bob's moving, Ken seconding, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Fog ordinance. All right, we have, looking for variances, we have five variance requests. People who want to see a foggy town.
Do they fill out their ethics reports?
Do I need to proceed?
Why don't you just, I guess, maybe give us your recommendations?
Okay, these recommendations were sent to the town council, copied to each of the five entities requesting variance, which covers actually seven locations. And I just wanna jump to Calvary United Methodist Church, there's one update on that one, and I believe it's the first sentence on the second page, where the recommendation is that a variance be issued contingent upon the town performing an onsite inspection, and that inspection has taken place, so you can cross that out. All of these variance requests, two are, well, one's from Frederick County Public Schools, one is from the Carroll County Public Schools, and three different churches, and there have been inspections by Brian Johnson of all of them, and as a result of that, the Water and Sewer Commission is recommending to various degrees, variances from the requirements of the town code on sewer. Those variances really cover areas where there are kind of fixed requirements of dates, you need to do this quarterly, and, and so on and so on, because the grease traps in these seven locations aren't used anywhere near what a restaurant would do, and therefore, it would be, in our opinion, an unfair burden on these seven locations to pump their grease traps quarterly, and incur the expense of doing that when, actually, that'd be unnecessary. And the inspection's done by Brian, and he has told some of them that do have some grease that goes into the grease trap over the course of a period of time, that they may consider pumping it maybe once a year or something. The recommendation here simply relieves them of doing it quarterly, and says you should do it when your grease trap is twenty-five percent full. And also, since you're not pumping quarterly, there's a record-keeping requirement that says that you must submit your invoice for the pumping that happens quarterly with your, and you can submit it with your town water bill, well, if you're not doing that, you don't need to submit it, so what we've done is just exempted them from having to file anything directly with the town, simply to maintain all the records that are required. And I just point out that Chapter Ninety-One, which is, this is part of, covers sewer system in its entirety, and there is no relief from any prohibition or liability resulting from dumping anything into the sewer system, that, that has not changed. There is also, in this ordinance, covering everybody in town, beefed up liability on their part, should they, it be determined that they caused a blockage in the sewer system. And there, there's also, for people who run restaurants, a requirement in there for training of the people who use the kitchens, and that's stays. So basically, all we're doing here is simply saying that those requirements that are unnecessary and cause a needless expense to a entity or location should be waived, and that does not in any way, in our opinion, put the town at any more risk of incurring a, some sort of sewer blockage.
Thanks, gentlemen, we can, I guess, just vote to accept their recommendations, hold or we can go one at a time. Chris?
One question, and then I've got conflict of interest.
On St. James?
I've got, I've got a conflict of interest for Calvary United Methodist Church, I don't feel it can be objective, I also have a conflict of interest on St. Andrews Presbyterian, so I will recuse myself from those two, because I can't be impartial. But, and I do have a question, for the faith communities in general, Dick, I, does council have the power, and I believe we should, waive the training and requirements, and, you know, waive the training, employee training requirements, I'm not even sure who they would train. If you take, for example...
Actually, that question's come up, I've been asked that directly by one of the churches, and also was brought up by Carroll County Schools. And what that training requirement is, that there, you, there's a form, and the form says, when somebody's gonna use the kitchen, just make sure that they're aware of this, this, and this, and please have those people that monitor the kitchen sign that form to say they're aware of it, and we're recommending that they post the best practices above the sink in there, that, that is it.
Yeah.
So it's really not...
Right, but I still, I still recommend, understood, but I still recommend that the council waive, for the faith communities, waive the training requirements, again, it's not practical.
Well, but if all it is really is posting above the sink, you know, don't dump grease down here.
Yeah, I'm kinda.
Okay.
I'm kinda thinking that sounds pretty good to me.
Sounds pretty easy to me, too.
All right, then I'll pull that.
Yeah, and also, I'm gonna say that the two entities that did contact had absolutely no problem with that.
Then I'll pull that.
It's good thought, if it were laborious.
Yeah, if there was something they really had to do, but just basically this, you know, make sure everybody knows you don't dump grease down the sink, it's pretty good.
Nothing like that two-hundred B test, huh, Derek?
I'd also point out that, uh, two of the locations, actually, that made the list do not have grease traps, but they're, and therefore, they ask for a variance. One is St. Andrews Presbyterian Church, and the other one is Mount Airy Elementary School. And they are still included on here because, once this list was developed of all potential sites, the Water and Sewer Commission felt it was important that the council actually pass on this to say that you are fully exempt from the two sections in the code that cover fog. So we have those two locations that are fully exempt, and we have five locations that are exempt, as I explained earlier.
I guess Mather Elementary is just so old.
Yeah, probably because the kitchen hasn't been changed.
The kitchen was built in nineteen fifty?
Right, whereas Pars Ridge and Middle School both do have grease traps.
They fed the kitchen the grease back then, they didn't have any waste.
Just one question, Dick, how many people in town is trained to do the inspections? Just one, or two, or three, or four, or five?
We are in the process of having a minimum of two people, most likely three people trained. They will be trained by representatives of WSSC, and I can't tell you definitively whether the training has taken place yet, they're making arrangements with WSSC.
So you have one now?
No, we have, they're all going together, so.
So nobody's trained?
Unless they've been trained within the last month or so, no.
It's all very new.
And the problem, this question came up because, in researching this, there seems to be no, I don't know, official training, no licensing that covers inspection of grease traps. And so, we felt that, as this process goes on, and we get more involved with restaurants, which is the focus of this, that we do need people to have adequate training to be able to make a determination on a restaurant, and partly because of concern about the fact that we don't want to have somebody cited and possibly fined, and then have them come back and say, but unfortunately, your people aren't adequately trained to make that recommendation and determination and fight the issue, so.
All right, yeah, good plan.
We tapped on WSSC and asked them if they would help us out, and they were more willing to do that, but I don't think the training has actually taken place yet.
How, how do you want to deal with this, you want to go one at a time?
Um, I mean, if you, I'll recuse myself from these two, so I'll leave while you do that, and then if you want to do the bulk.
Before we go one at a time, I'm a member of Calvary, do I need to recuse myself?
You need to recuse yourself, probably best, yes.
Other people?
All right, let's go one at a time on these, we'll start with Calvary, because Dick brought it up. That leaves three of us.
Well, you want a motion to exclude them?
Uh, I guess, I will.
I should leave.
No, I, we're gonna move on in a second, so.
Turn the list on.
Uh, I will recommend that we accept, I guess the way to do this would be, accept the recommendations made by the Water and Sewer Commission in their report for Calvary.
As amended, because it's not contingent anymore upon inspection.
So is that a motion?
Well, yeah, because, well, that's done, but, you know, we don't even need to amend that, just as they have to have inspected, it's already done.
Well, actually, there's another contingency in there, which is a entity that failed to file a, the form that states exactly what the grease trap is, size, nature, what's under the sink and ground. So, these, except for, I think, Frederick County Schools, they all say that we're recommending that variance be approved contingent upon, and it's, and in Calvary's case, it's not you submit the form.
Maybe the motion should be, as far as Calvary is concerned, I recommend we accept the recommendations of the Water and Sewer Commission and its contingencies with the one amendment on that one, that they've already had the onsite inspection performed.
Second.
Does that sound, I mean, Dick, this is new territory for all of us on how we're gonna do this process.
That's correct.
So, any discussion on that from the three of us? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that one passed.
All right, I'd like to, I'd like to go to St. Andrews Presbyterian Church, because this is one of the entities that actually got on the list to not have a grease trap, and our recommendation is they be exempt from section ninety-one dash twenty-two, ninety-one dash twenty-six point one, in their entirety.
Do they have, like, no kitchen up there?
They have, I believe it's a sink and a refrigerator.
A sink, microwave.
All right, yeah, okay.
They make great coffee on Sunday.
Okay, well, I will move that we accept the recommendations for all of the exemptions on St. Andrews as outlined, and I will say, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the recommendations from Water and Sewer, which Bob has seconded. Chris, once again, is recusing himself on this one, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, Chris, you're back in.
St. James Episcopal Church, and they need to submit the form, in addition, at the time this was prepared, they did not have an onsite inspection, they've had an onsite inspection, and Brian found limited use of their kitchen, and that would create any fog, and therefore recommends that we approve a variance.
Okay, well, I will recommend that we accept the Water and Sewer Commission's recommendations as to St. James Episcopal Church, as outlined in their recommendation to us, with the one amendment being that they have already been inspected and this required an inspection.
Ooh, he's seconded you.
Scott seconded, Scott Park right up.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I keep waiting for you to second one.
Frederick County Public Schools.
Frederick County Public Schools, and they have had an inspection, they have also filed their forms, and the recommendation is that we provide similar variance from the mandatory requirements quarterly, pumping the system and the record-keeping requirement.
This is for the elementary school, correct?
Yeah, Twin Ridge Elementary.
Twin Ridge.
I will recommend that we accept the Water and Sewer Commission's recommendations for the Frederick County Public Schools, which would be Twin Ridge.
You can do it.
Yeah, second.
We've got a second.
But Bob had a pen, but he did, he orally.
He just jumped in that order.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, the last batch is Carroll County Public Schools, all three of them, and the first one that would take is Mount Airy Elementary, because it was determined they do not have a grease trap, and therefore, it should be exempt in their entirety from the two sections of fog.
Recusing, I can't.
What, your kids go there?
My kids go to school. Mount Airy Elementary.
All right, he's out, go.
I homeschool, so I didn't have those issues. Bob will move, we accept the recommendations from the Water and Sewer Commission on, from Carroll County Public Schools on Mount Airy Elementary School.
I'll second.
I saw Chris's hand up there. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, Scott recused himself on that one.
And I think we could deal with Pars Ridge and Mount Airy Middle together, they're both the same.
Scott, you have kids in those?
Oh, boy.
Okay.
They both have grease traps, they've been inspected, and the only contingency in there would be the filing of that form for both those schools.
I will recommend we accept the recommendations of the Water and Sewer Commission on the Carroll County Public Schools, both Pars Ridge and Mount Airy Middle School, as recommended, with the fact that the contingency removed because they've already had the, what was the contingency?
No, 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 the contingency is that they still must file their.
But that's in the recommendation.
Yeah, it's in the recommendation.
Okay, as recommended, you got a second? Scott's recusing himself, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And I just.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you, Ray.
Dick, thank you.
That is why we need people to come on Water and Sewer, because we do all this interesting work. Tell them, Dick.
Great, see you later.
Very interesting work. I just wanted to thank all the people that put in the variances request, because in dealing with them, everybody was extremely cooperative, and I was gonna say, they're very open, and they were very positive about the fog ordinance, and just asked for these minor changes, so. Appreciate what they, their support.
Dick, on behalf of the council, thanks for.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for everything.
Thanks to.
If you didn't do that, I'd have had to.
Thanks to Brian for inspecting these things, you guys ever smelled a grease trap? It's not, you know, not, not real nice.
They're not great.
It's like Cisco, Chrisken.
It's not, it's not something you want to have to do if you don't have to. Okay, moving on to reports, I think, am I correct, reports next?
Got it.
Did I miss anything, Mayor?
Very briefly, just want to, once again, thank Ben Galecki, Chris Coleman, and all the businesses, and everybody that was involved in the Independence Day celebration, that was actually held on July fifth.
It was excellent.
Once again, it was the best party in Mount Airy, again, very little tax dollars was spent, we did help facilitate a little bit more this year, so again, thank you to all the businesses, especially Ben and Galecki and Chris Coleman and everyone else that did such a wonderful job out there. I'd say the Fox team was very instrumental digging, rigging, I want to mention them, some other people. Community forums for the mayor have been suspended just for the summer, but you can call Town Hall at any time and get my phone number if you want to call and talk to me, they will resume again in September. Volunteer opportunities are still out there, please write. That's gonna conclude my short, well, really quick, just want to thank Mary Hushour for the dinosaurs, they did a great job painting them, I think, Mary Beth Rook for one of the ideas to preserve those dinosaurs, and again, Chris Coleman for donating those dinosaurs. Please drive by Wildwood Park.
They're cool.
And they are really cool, so that's another, another thing out there. That concludes my report, I have one commission reappointment, it's George Gavera for Parks and Recreation.
I will move, we accept the commission.
I'll second it.
Oh.
You got Bob seconding it?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it was unanimous. Arts Alliance, Economic Development, Water and Sewer Commission.
Okay, the Arts Alliance is rescheduling their Loriento fundraiser, lack of ticket sales caused the event to be postponed for a later date. The Fall Concert Series will be starting in mid-August and run through the end of September or later, depending upon the weather. The next art exhibit will be open here on September the sixth, and I think that's one that they're gonna do both here and at one-oh-two, which is right next door, down in the basement, so they're gonna have two areas. Next meeting of the Arts Alliance is on Wednesday, August the thirteenth, seven-thirty at Town Hall. Economic Development, the July meeting was cancelled because, canceled because of the carnival. Next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, seven-thirty at Town Hall. Water and Sewer Commission, there's not been a Water and Sewer meeting since our last council meeting, therefore, there's nothing really serious to report. For the month of July, the wastewater treatment plant has processed an average daily of point six-six-seven million gallons, our MDE permit allows one-point-two million gallons. I'm gonna ask Dick Swanson to step to the podium, and I gave you all this sheet. Dick knows the vernacular much better than I am, so he's gonna walk us through this.
Very, very quickly, back in June, there was a meeting with Tom Devliss from Carroll County, and the numbers estimating what the five-year remediation cost for stormwater management.
Rain tax.
Updated, it was two-point-nine million for the Carroll County side, and if you kind of extrapolate, we're probably talking some number of four million or so, and this is just a small chart, and these are estimates out of Carroll County. And that number that would have hovered around four to four-and-a-half million dollars before is now, for Carroll County, one-point-six-nine million, and five-hundred thousand roughly for Frederick side, for a total of two-million-one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, so we've almost chopped that in half.
Still a lot of money.
But it's still a lot of money, so, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
But we're still gonna, we're working to piggyback with the county on a lot of.
Right.
We are, we are cost-sharing with Carroll County, on the Carroll County side, eighty percent is what they're willing to pay for, and we, our obligation is twenty percent.
So that rain tax threat has been greatly, greatly reduced.
This is not the rain taxes.
I'm sorry.
This is the MDE, EPA permits, stormwater permits, that, and they're the ones that dictate the requirements of what you do to actually get out there and do remediation, this is the expense side of the house, not, rain tax is the revenue side.
Okay.
And then we have that additional, that additional font thing of being Frederick County and Carroll County, so.
Well, we still have Frederick County to deal with.
Right.
We're pretty much out of the woods with Carroll County, we.
We still have eighty percent of one-point-seven million bucks. We could use that money. Twenty, thank you, twenty percent. Rather use the money for something benefits of town.
Fifty percent of a year's worth of road paving.
Yeah, the, the, the thing about Frederick County is that, and Monica's well aware of this, that for budget purposes, we really need to know where Frederick County stands as we get into the budget cycle, whether there's any participation, or are we gonna bear the entire load of remediation costs for the Frederick County side, so.
So that would be.
It is critical to know for budget purposes, for FY sixty.
One thing, one thing I can say is that Carroll County, the Environmental Services Office has offered their services for designing and retrofitting stormwater facilities on the Frederick side, they can't offer us any money, but they can offer us their in-house services for design and insulting, so, and that's, there's no cost to that.
On the Frederick side?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, money would be nice.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're gonna meet with Frederick County on September fourth, actually, we have a meeting scheduled already to meet with Tom's counterpart over there, Shannon Moore, but Tom Devliss let us know in our WRCC meeting that they're gonna provide our, they're gonna help us with engineering and administration of what we need to do in Frederick County.
Are they still, Frederick, they're still caught up in the, sure, we'll comply with the rain tax, we'll, we are taxing each property one penny, they're still, they're still fighting with the state?
That's in place, but as soon as we get together with Shannon, we'll be able to tell you a lot more.
September fourth.
But I've noted that Mount Airy residents living on the Frederick County side are exempt from that penny. That only, that.
Right, because we're municipal.
Because we're, yeah, they're a municipality, and, which kind of makes it more nebulous as to what extent the county, Frederick County's gonna step up.
Yeah, I'm wondering if they're expecting us to pass our own one set.
Charge. September fourth.
Let's see, ten thousand, never mind.
All right.
Dick, thank you very much, the last thing, the next Water and Sewer meeting is this Wednesday, August the sixth, seven PM, Town Hall, right here, come and hang out with me and Dick and Fred Goundry.
And we may have some new members.
Great time, we have a great time at these meetings, come on down. I'm done.
All right.
Take it away.
Beautification, Parks and Rec, still having trouble getting used to, you know, after, after ten years of doing streets, I'm having trouble. Every single person who came in today found one of these on their chair. This is a camp night.
I didn't.
Not you guys, them out there.
To be clear, everybody in the audience.
Everybody in the audience who came in tonight found one of these on their chair, camp night, August ninth, Watkins Park, gonna have Slim Harrison back again, looks like they're gonna have an astronomy exhibit again, according to this, Dutch Oven Cook-Off, that's some good food there. This is a great fun event, you can spend the night in the park, the only recommendation I'll make from my past experience is bring earplugs. You don't realize how noisy it is in that park till you're sleeping there at three AM in a tent, and, you know, some guy goes down twenty-seven in the middle of the night, and you realize, it's, it's a lot louder in that park than you think, but still, it's a lot of fun, you know, you're spending the night with a lot of folks, I recommend it.
And this, I'll just point out a little bit of town history here, there used to be a young guy that was a council liaison by the name of Peter Helt, that was the Parks and Rec Council Liaison, and this was his idea about fifteen years ago.
Long time ago.
Yes, it was.
There you go.
Yeah, so it's a lot of fun, and it's, I think it's been growing every year, and we don't charge, but when we started it, we actually charged, because you get food.
Right.
And so we're not doing that anymore.
Hot dogs and all, just about all you can eat, and hot dogs and watermelons and sodas and all that kind of stuff, and then they're showing Despicable Me at about eight thirty.
I knew that, I kept sitting there, I knew there was something I was forgetting.
The first one, second one.
The first one. We're gonna have the screen out there, Despicable Me will be shown out on the hillside out there, so, I kept thinking, I was sitting there looking at this, there's something I'm forgetting to mention.
I remember that Despicable Me stuff.
Yes, yes, okay, great, so you go there and see all the little minions. Beautification, you know, beautification, you know, they've been, it's really amazing what, you know, what some of them are doing, these guys, beautifications and, you know, and the gals, they actually go out during the week, you know, when the rest of us are working, and they're out there weeding, because I've actually gone out, you know, and chatted with them while they're doing it, they're going out weeding the guards and things out in these parks. I mean, you'll drive down the street and you'll see them out there, you know, on a Tuesday morning. You know, other municipalities pay staff to go out and do, you know, a great deal of planting and work that we're getting from these guys in beautification, so, you know, it's really great. One of the things beautification did at this last meeting is we approved, actually, we discussed an Eagle project, which was passed on to Parks, and which Parks later approved, we discussed the painting of the dinosaurs Mary Hushour did, that's a beautification project, beautification was responsible for getting them there, getting them redone, they're gonna be working on some, some mulching, some more picnic tables for Wildwood Park, and they're purchasing some, like, red, white, and blue bunting to go on the pavilion there at Wildwood Park. So beautification has actually been quite busy, obviously, the busiest thing was the signs, which have been passed on, and the signs are being ordered, the council saw them at the last month's meeting.
Right.
We saw pictures of them, they've been up before, and I will raise that issue in the, in the street, in the, in the Parks end of things. Beautification will be meeting again on the nineteenth, which is the third Tuesday in this room at seven. On the Park side, the caboose is going to be moved soon, hopefully, perhaps in the next week or so. Tom is working on all the different MOU documents that all have to be signed, because we're working on an agreement to make sure that it gets back to us and that all the proper hand changes take, that's all in process, but digging and rigging may be able to move it as soon as a week, I know BNO sent back an email, said they need to make room, make sure they have room for it, because they apparently have an engine and another caboose, so they've got to get room in there, but it'll hopefully be moving soon. There's been some new things going up, the Rotary Club's been doing some work at Watkins Park on the trail, they've provided some stuff, they, some of you made, they did the bridge and some other things there, so the Rotary Club has provided some landscaping around the entrance in there to the new rail trail, they put in a big stone over there, so the Rotary Club's been really helpful with that project, the rail and trail projects going forward. We are now going to get started working at this end, behind Blossom and Basket, so there's still the issue with one property in the middle there, which we're still waiting for them to get their certifications together, but we're gonna start working from the other end now, so there's a lot of work coming in on that. Beautification, Parks approved the Eagle project for a bench and everything to go in along the rail trail, that's coming up. The other issue that came up, I think, which we were all in on the emails this month, and really kind of, I want to throw this at Tom, and in here for council discussions, we had the issue of procedures. The procedure that came up is back in June, beautification finished their sign process, they took the signs to Parks, back in June, Parks said, yeah, these are fine, in June, they were actually taken to the joint commission meeting, which we had, that was just kind of an extra, because we had that meeting. The mayor indicated that the signs should go through planning. Parks belief is that, you know, what Parks is doing does not need to go through planning, once Parks has approved the expenditure of funds on something that the. Once Parks has approved the expenditure of funds on something that the council has given them authority to do, Parks thinks we're basically ready to move forward at that time. Now, because we had to get pushed into July, we actually got out of our budget year, because it was actually slated and, and it was invoiced for June. Charlene, however, said she's gonna sort it out in the books, because it was, the, the sign was actually last year's budget, so we were hoping to get it in June, uh, but we didn't, it's in July, but I'm gonna let Charlene work her magic on that, but we may need a budget amendment at some point, because it got shifted by a month, um, because of the delay of going to planning. Parks' perspective is, why are we going to planning? My perspective, and I'll, I'll leave these with you, Tom, because we kinda like you to decide where the law is on this. My perspective on Parks and Rec, it says Parks and Rec shall supervise and direct the expenditure of all appropriations and funds made available to the board from whatever source. So our perspective is, and procedure has been in the past, when we build a building in a park, we just go ahead and do it. When we put up a sign up, which we do monthly, we don't go to planning, we just put up the signs, so that's that. And of course, the council's powers, which you're aware of, the council appropriates municipal monies, monies for any purpose which are within the powers of the council. These are items which the council has, has budgeted, so the council has said to Parks here, do these signs. And then the mayor's instructions are to see that the ordinance of the town are faithfully executed. So our perspective is that, you know, once we say, we're going forward with these signs, and the ordinance has come in, the mayor should be telling staff, okay, we're going forward with these signs, the mayor should not be saying, no, I want this to go through this commission, that commission, or the other commission, because at that point, if we're gonna go down that route, we could send these signs to every commission in the world. And, you know, are streets gonna now start sending street signs over to planning? So I would not let the mayor's.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, so first of all, I would say.
We're bringing this up for discussion, that was a decision.
Reports on under.
Well, excuse me, I, I have the floor, and I would expect to have the floor, I expect not to get interrupted, I expect not to get rushed. Make that very clear. Well, because you do have a habit, sir, of rushing and cutting off, and I don't want jokes, I wanna get this out. When I ran for mayor, I ran to make a difference. I didn't like the way we were doing things in the past. I do not wanna go back to the, it's a my commission mentality. We've worked very hard, the man out there in the audience, Bill Butts, has worked very hard. One of the reasons that joint meeting with commissions was such a success is because we shared information. One of the things I have to say, I'm a little disappointed that this was not on the agenda, yet you've prepared documents and highlighted them for distribution, and you did not put it on the agenda. That, I think, is improper. That being said, I'm fine with addressing every point you made. We do not wanna go back to the mentality, we wanna work together and share with commissions. The mayor never said that this has to be approved by planning. In fact, this has been a process that the mayor and staff jointly have been going through of sharing information. We do this, we've done this ever since my administration started, five years ago. We share information with each other, we work together, we have a collaborative environment. This was not sent to planning for approval, for anything, it was sent to planning for informational. It makes good sense. There is no rush on a park sign. And I'm sorry, and I don't know if it was delayed through another budget year, I knew nothing about that, I'm not even sure that really happened, we can get down into weeds about that later. This was a simple informational, take it to planning, see if they got, have any good ideas, and I was really kind of ashamed to see that it's my commission mentality, this will not go to planning, because that's in total conflict with what we've all been doing lately. We're sharing information, we're working together. It was brought to planning explicitly, and I got upstairs at the podium, you do not have approval process, they do not need your approval. They do not need planning's approval. But as executive, if I'm working with the commissions, I'm gonna make sure processes are followed, and I think that's a good process to continue and to try to go around it, and, and again, I don't think it's responsible to pick and choose parts of the, uh, the charter that, that you like. The mayor is the CFO, he's the chief executive operating officer. I do direct staff, to me, it made good sense just to vet this as an informational process. You cannot tell planning, they can't talk about it. They had every right to talk about it, we were gonna talk about it. And so the process, when you said that, well, they shouldn't even talk about, no, this should not go through, they absolutely should. And I hope the council sees that way, that we keep moving forward, we keep positive, we keep sharing information. No, I never said it needs to go through planning for approval. That is incorrect. In fact, it's been stated on public record, I don't know if anybody was here at the time, it's on public record, that they did not have approval process over it. So that part of it, you're correct, was never changed. That being said, I'm a little passionate about this, I'll step down and yield to the, because there was five other council members at this table, okay? Okay, you have one mayor, you have five council members, I'd like to hear their opinion.
Uh, only thing I'll add to that is, what I handed to Tom was in the email that I sent to everybody at this table when we were arguing this among emails, those are all ones that I actually cut.
I never seen any documents.
I cut and pasted all those charter things into the emails.
Wow, you may have.
And there wasn't, the, the discussion in the emails was we would bring it up at the table here, so that's what I'm doing.
Well, it was not on the agenda, so you're not doing what, it should have been on the agenda. Discussion was put on agenda, if we're gonna have a discussion, put it on the agenda. You don't surprise people like that. That being said, I'm fine.
Bob?
When, when I was with Parks, we operated, and, and that was in, in a different way. We operated in a different way. Okay, I wanna operate the way that you say. Okay, and, and, you know, Mr. Butts, um, you know, I watched the good things that are happening in town, and us being able to sit around this table and talk, which two or three years ago was not happening. Okay, this is, this is a good thing. And I think we'll continue, if, if we continue to hold everybody else's opinions, you know, and as, as high as ours and that kind of stuff, that we'll be able to do this. Because I found that I disagree with some things that, that happen at this table, and you gentlemen, allow me to voice those concerns, and then vote me down anyway. And I thank you for that. And I have no prob, for voting it down, yeah. I have, I have no problem extending that courtesy to somebody else. And I think we all extend it to each other. Um, anybody got a guitar, kumbaya?
So, um, to me, this one sounds like. To me, this sounds like a misunderstanding. The, the impression that I got from some of the emails was that, and this is the impression. The impression I got was that planning needed to approve it. So it, assuming that impression was wrong, Parks should have been, and I'll ask the, again, I'm not speaking for planning, the chairman of planning has a different opinion, please let me know. The impression I got was, planning had to see it and approve it before they could execute the money. My opinion is, planning could go ahead and execute the money, it's been given to them, go.
You mean Parks?
Parks.
Thank you, thank you, Parks.
Parks, Parks didn't need to run this through planning. It, it sent it over to planning as information, which was appreciated, but Parks could have pulled the trigger the moment they made the decision.
I told them that they had to do it, do it. I thought it was irresponsible, and as an executive, I'm against it, and I made that very clear. But it was, it was explicitly stated several times, this is informational, by me and by Heather.
Uh, so, all I'm saying is.
So whatever impression.
All I'm saying is, I think there was, the, I mean, the impression I had, which certainly could have been wrong, probably is. The impression I have was that it had to go through planning first before Parks could pull the trigger and spend the money. My opinion is, as Peter said, Parks has been given the money, they can pull the trigger, execute it. Send it over to planning just to say, hey, here's what we're up to, which is great, because planning would take that sign design, keep it as reference, understand, you know, how things are being done, make sure that design incorporates, you know, incorporates some, is incorporating the other elements, and that's all fine. So I think it's, really, I think this is maybe a little normal tension between the executive branch and the legislative branches, which is as expected. But my opinion is, Parks doesn't, didn't need planning's approval. We thought maybe they did, but I guess you've clarified that. Planning, sorry, Pat, Pat, you've clarified that. Parks did not need approval for planning. Having it sent over for information was desired, so I'm not sure there's a conflict here, if that's the case.
I agree.
And I may have tossed my little cup of gasoline on the fire, but, you know, and I apologize for, for doing that.
Ken?
The question I got, you were just sending it over for informational purposes only, it'd already been approved by, by the council to do this sign. Having said that, oh, other buildings in, in town are, are approved by the planning zoning, what's the difference in the parks? If you think about it, should they not take a look at signs, should they not take a look at buildings? Oh, other buildings are, are approved by the parks, I mean, by planning?
Well, that, that's the real question we're dealing with, is.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so.
I did say, I said to Pat when we got here, I said, what signs do we bring? You know, was it just these signs? Because they were, I asked you before, I said, do we just bring these, because these were big signs, are we done? And he was like, well, it depends. And I'm like, Parks needs some kind of guidance here, because we put up a couple of signs a month.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we can sit here and dissect, at, at due respect.
It hasn't, it hasn't.
Some of those things were red herrings when you said street signs and stuff.
It hasn't been our practice in the past, but it's not a, it's not a bad thing to talk amongst ourselves to, you know.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's why we're bringing it up here. Scott?
So the only thing I would end up saying, coming from planning and being involved in this discussion, is that we all signed up for transparency and open communication. So I think there's nothing wrong with sharing information between all the different bodies and faucets.
Right.
So everybody is aware of what is going on. With that end, though, if Parks has been authorized to spend money on signs and shares it with planning to say, hey, here's what we're gonna do, that helps planning to know, okay, here's what we're doing, let's maybe give comments, doesn't mean it hampers your ability to execute, but they may say, well, in all the other parks, we did it this way, why are you doing this one different? To have an understanding, again, that communication channel, but I still think Parks should be able to execute the money, and I think that everybody should be able to share what we're doing with signs, whether it's street signs, we've done it before. You were doing street signs, and we talked about the font had to be changed for all the street signs, and we're gonna have to go through and do all that again. Right? It was shared with us.
Correct.
Streets had to do it.
Right.
But you shared it.
Right, although, yeah, no, you're correct.
So, so in that same vein of functionality, we should do that across all the commissions as a well-oiled operating body.
Right, well, I think, I think staff, the one problem is staff needs something here, because basically beautification was coming up, and, and I'm getting in on this first meeting, okay, so, my first meeting, this gets dropped on me, beautification, what are we gonna do? Beautification comes to me and said, we've spent six, eight months working on these designs. Uh, the designs had been to the joint meeting of all the commissions, they'd been here to the council meeting the month before in order to, you know, okay, we're done, let's pull the trigger, the guy's waiting, he's already invoiced us for these things in June. And then we hit this roadblock, and we're like, okay, are we gonna send things to, are we gonna send things, I mean, what commission sees things, where's it?
Right, but I think the consensus is what we're saying. My impression from the consensus here is that, correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, my impression from the council is, consensus from the council is that Parks didn't need approval. They could pull the trigger and spend the funds.
Okay.
The mayor is asking, and the council violently agrees with the mayor, that still send that information over for.
Oh, we, I agree, Parks, yeah.
So to me, the issues, to me, the issues.
Even if you're pulling the trigger today, and you're doing it, you would just say, hey, as a courtesy.
Well, staff, and staff felt they were not allowed to do that.
But staff works.
That verdict, and it says best practices as your executive officer, and if there was a reason that we shouldn't wait, I think it was four days, then pull the trigger, I said, go ahead. I think it's stupid. As your chief executive officer that wants to do things better, it's a best practices type of policy that I wanna continue, and I thank the council, I've heard your consensus, thank you.
So you're basically authorizing staff that they can share information.
But you can't, you can't unauthorize them not to share information, they can't.
That sounds like what the whole problem is.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but now I see your point, but you can't tell them they can't talk about it. That's what I'm hearing.
No, no, the problem we were faced is, is staff was caught in the middle, beautification was saying, we're done with these signs, we need to go forward. You know, you can show them to planning, but planning can't make any changes, because they're already done, the designs are already built, it's already built, it's already ready to go.
Yeah, you actually.
That's the problem.
Right, we're gonna beat this to death.
Yeah.
So my suggestion, my suggestion is, we've already reached consensus. The consensus seems to be, A, the commission that has been authorized by the council to spend funds can execute those funds. That commission can execute the funds, period and a sentence. The commission should, as a matter of best practice, share whatever relevant information they have with another commission. I think that's the practice.
I do.
I think anything else we do here is just gonna keep.
I, I do too, and I wanna beat it, but Tom, when you're looking at the charter itself, the chief, the chief financial officer would have the right, I would think, and the responsibility.
Not let the check that go.
Excuse me, would have the right and the responsibility to sit since Mount Airy if he thought another review, if he wanted to look at it and say, well, let's just make sure we're going through a process, pause it, that he would have that right to do so.
That's the issue.
Without, without blocking, without stopping it.
Yeah.
But I thought it was best practices.
He summed the issue up very well, that's the issue.
Okay, but then, if that's the issue.
Well, that's, that's another part of the issue too.
If that's.
But I did say they could go ahead and spend it, but I did feel that as chief executive officer, chief financial officer, let's just pause, take a minute, guys, let's share. This is our best practices now, this is what we're doing, we're sharing amongst the other commissions. I never blocked the purchase of these signs or moving forward.
Sorry, to diffuse this issue, I think, let's move, my suggestion is, let's move past the whole park sign issue, let's move past that, because I think we have consensus. Now, the mayor brings up another point, independent of any other issue, which is, I think, worth looking at. The mayor's point is this. According to the charter and the way the charter's written, can the mayor, in a sense, veto, because that's what we're asking?
Postpone, postpone it.
I'm saying review.
Postpone, because if you can review, you can postpone it.
Okay, can the mayor either veto or postpone the expenditure of something that's already been authorized? That's a simple question.
Right.
It should be handled outside of this whole.
Can you block the mayor from, from reviewing, let's phrase another, can you block the mayor from reviewing an expense?
Okay, yeah, yeah, I.
Do you block your CFO from reviewing an expense?
Second, two questions.
Yeah, it's, it's just another way of looking at it, he's right, I mean, it's just, let me think, I mean, staff was stuck in the middle, and I could see their problems.
Well, they weren't really stuck in the middle, this is a staff process. No, this was staff initiated, I support it.
Staff had their instructions from the mayor.
Well, no, actually, no, you're actually incorrect. It's not, this was staff initiated with my support, because this is what we do now.
Again, we're going back and.
This is what we do now.
We're going back and beating that horse.
But go back, go back to the CFO issue.
Let, let's leave the dead horse, let's leave that alone, let's go to, just the mayor's asked a question, independent of any other thing, can you postpone veto the expenditure?
Not veto.
I, I don't think you can veto.
Not veto.
Okay, can you postpone?
So I have the right to review, yeah.
Okay, and just leave it at that.
All expenses.
And then let's move on, please.
I think we have.
I'd like to hear the legal issue first.
Maybe a citizen who wants to come in.
Well.
Yeah, he's wondering.
A legal response.
Who's paying for these lights on after nine thirty at night?
Am I gonna go first?
Well, yeah, I don't.
I would prefer, if, I, I wanna hear from you, sir, but I would like to hear just from, it's been asked multiple questions to our legal counsel.
Which, yeah.
So I, I would like some type of response before we continue to go down a path.
I'll get back to you, tell him, I'll get back to you.
Yeah, well, I, I typically prefer that. I mean, I, there were a lot of questions there, and obviously, this is, I'm, I'm getting this like tonight, okay? Uh, which is, I just love giving legal advice, just throwing that out there.
Can you just give it to us next, next counsel?
Yeah, just let, let us know what you think.
Yeah, I mean, I will give you my impression that the mayor has a certain prerogative and power to at least, uh, determine who reviews, uh, various aspects of procurement. It doesn't mean he gets to veto it or permanently postpone, and I don't hear the mayor suggesting that's, that's what he was suggesting. I think it's, you know, this is not gonna be very well spelled out in the charter, I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna have to imply some power to, uh, uh, as a C, CFO, you know, to, where does he get advice, is basically where this comes down to, and can he seek advice, I guess, or input?
I'm happy with your answer.
But, you know, again, I, I don't think that.
So I can tell Parks the beautification.
Right, but I think.
I'm not vetoing anything or just postponing, well, no, that's not quite right.
Thank you, Tom.
I mean, I, you know, that, that's my impression.
You two switch chairs.
Okay, yes, please.
Thank you, Tom.
Uh, my name's Dwight Mullins, Three Warfield Drive, Mount Airy, Maryland. I'm on the beautification committee, and, uh, as of four months ago, I was under the impression that the mayor wanted beautification to draw up some signs. And he wanted some kind of uniform, four to four parts we have, Wildwood, uh, Watkins, Best, Best Parks, and East West. So we did that, under the understanding that, you know, they all be similar in context and all that. That had been brought, and it was, you know, sent to the mayor and the council, and we thought he was right pleased with it. And that, where, where this misconception got in staffs, that planning had to be involved, uh, I don't know how that, that come about, but I feel that being the mayor, as beautification, to come up with this idea and, and develop these signs, that he has the right to, you know, go ahead and do that, and, and it be approved, and it shouldn't have to be go through anybody else. That's just my personal opinion, you know.
Yeah, and, but we love the signs, by the way, everyone loves the signs. I don't wanna pretend I'm a gambler.
Yeah, we're not, we're not.
Yeah, I don't think anybody at this table.
We're trying to sort out procedure for the future.
Yeah, the, the signs are awesome, you all do an awesome job. Peter had mentioned that, how he seats them at the weddings, I've been saying at this table. I've been saying at this table for years, you're the commission gets dirt underneath your fingernails, so...
I love him, thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Tom, have fun.
Thanks, Tom.
Just, we just want some...
Any more legal advice that you need, just let us know.
You know, Parks particularly, because we do a lot of sign work, we just need to know, do we, what do we need to do with everything?
Well, and I don't know if we're gonna do it everything basis, I think in general, the CFO has a right to review, but not veto or just permanently delay.
But we don't even normally take them to the mayor, normally, we just tell Brian, go...
I think we're going back to, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, secretary, I'm gonna inject, I think we're going back to killing this thing again.
It will come down to who ultimately is the procuring's...
Authority.
Authority. And if the answer's the mayor, which I suspect I'm gonna find it is, then I think that while certainly the mayor cannot veto what's been appropriated, it's, it's more than just the expenditure of money, as I understand it, is what kind of sign is it? What's it gonna look like? What's its size? And I do think that in that regard, if the mayor is the procuring agent, and I think I will probably find that he is from memory, then I think that the mayor has some prerogative to say, in deciding whether I'm gonna approve this design and procure, authorize procurement of this particular type of sign with this size, this design, I wanna hear from planning, because planning deals with signs frequently. On the issue, for instance, of uniformity, how does it look with other signs of like property, though not public property? So, I just, that's what I, I'm gonna tell you where I'm leaning.
Yeah, just, just give, because like I said, Parks has traditionally just said to Brian, go buy a sign and put it up.
Sure.
And so our question is, are we going to start to run this process?
Hey, push, push, pull, boys, girls, on the bathrooms, still do that. When you get into big signs, let's all take a look at it together.
Well, that's, where's that line? But we want to run them all.
But I'll, I'll take a look at it, issue something more for them.
Yeah, let me know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom, that was all, that was what we were looking for. Planning zoning community task force.
So we looked at some signs.
Came from Park, beautification?
That came from...
It was informational, I believe it was.
It was a quiet planning meeting, other than the signs.
Good.
I don't know what to say, sorry. Oh, it's ten o'clock, yeah. It was a short meeting, we looked at one or two sign approvals. We did discuss at length the upcoming Route 27 corridor study, corridor study, because that's a key linchpin into how things will grow. We also are looking at our OPE and our MXD, two new zoning categories, so the work is continuing on that. And actually, tonight, what I would like to do, to help staff, is set the date for the town council public hearing for the master plan. So, because of the amount of publicity documentation that has to be produced for the master plan, and this is extremely critical and key...
Wait, are we in 2016?
Yeah. Staff is suggesting either Monday, September the 23rd.
Twenty second, actually.
Monday's twenty second.
Heather, he's on stuff for the day.
Oh, yeah, let me go to the correction, thank you. Wait, do I need to go back and rewrite this before I, because of the correction?
It was Monday the 22nd or Tuesday the 23rd, I think.
That is correct, of September. So I, so I'd like to kind of get a consensus from the council of that Monday, I'm gonna suggest, because we usually meet on Mondays, that Monday the 22nd of September be the date for the public hearing. Everybody okay with that? Check your calendars.
I'm not sure, because I'm, I'm gonna be out of town coming up to then, so I'm not sure, but the Tuesday would, you know...
Tuesday's better for you?
Tuesday would probably be better for me.
Okay, I have no...
But I, but I need, for example, I still need to check that one anyways.
So right now, you're leaning towards Tuesday?
Right now, I'm leaning towards Tuesday.
Are you, Tuesday good for everybody else?
Well, yeah, it can be.
Okay.
Seven o'clock?
Um, we don't have the time yet.
We can do it at the fire, one of the fire buildings?
It's gonna have to, yeah. My guess is if, wow, is that a conflict of interest?
I just want to suggest, Tom.
Is that a conflict of interest?
Well, I mean, it's an exemption to the zoning, it's not...
We'll let staff determine.
Where?
Is it, so, we'll let staff determine a locale.
Although, I will say, we held them there last time, and you guys were, I mean, ten years ago, in the master plan, you guys were, were on there too, and we still held the meetings.
We had a lot of hearings of the zoning, of planning, Chris.
Sure, yeah, but, yeah.
I, I don't see any...
It's a staff decision, let, let them determine where, but...
You know, we have to see what the ballot...
Understood.
Yeah, that's true.
The question I would have, are you gonna try to do the whole thing, or are you gonna pick chapters when you're gonna do this thing, or...
It'll be a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
You know, you're gonna do the whole thing?
People will come up and...
It's a good question, Ken.
Just talk to us, it's not really us talking back to them.
We haven't did this process in ten years, nobody really...
You're gonna have, you're gonna have one, one hearing?
We quite probably may have more than one.
That's what I was curious, why you don't do it? One half and the other half, or, you know, you could try a few questions from the whole thing?
People might, will just come up and they'll say what they want to say, well, depending upon how many there are, I'll probably limit them to some timeframe, you know, I'll kind of say, raise your hands, if there's not many people, then we'll give them more time. If there's a million people, we're gonna say, hey, look, you gotta reduce it to five minutes, and then if we don't get to them all, we'll have another meeting and get the rest up.
We might need to start really early. While we're on this topic, this is gonna be my town attorney report, but this might make some sense to do this, to alert you to this here. You'll recall that several years ago, 2011, I was asked about the, the powers of the council versus the planning commission, rendered an opinion, then we requested an attorney general's opinion, which we have never gotten. I'm promised it, still. And I have reminded them that we are now really getting on to the time that we really kind of need the opinion. I will also say that that issue has been the subject of some great debate among the attorneys who serve, who are municipal attorneys in Maryland. Let me just leave it at that to simply suggest to you that I have, that I prepare for you sort of an outline of those issues, what I view to be your timeframe, potentially, under the code for you to review and ultimately approve, change, or, or send back, whatever, what I believe your powers are, what I believe the AGs may be prepared to say in that regard, if we don't have their opinion yet, hopefully we will, and to sort of lay out, because some of this will have a bearing on how many public hearings you have, when you have them, and things of that sort. So, what I'd like to do is, as you're receiving the master plan from the planning commission, sort of provide in, an outline of the legal issues and process that I think you may need to go through or want to go through, so...
I think Tom's being very modest, I think thanks to Mount Airy's letter a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
There is a whole lot of stuff happening right now, and it's thanks to a letter he wrote that we instituted a few years ago, so...
All right, so, I don't have specific guidance from staff on, I think the chair of the planning commission's indicating three, we, we believe the need is for three public meetings?
Oh.
Public hearings.
I'm sure if you're asking about, or speaking, I think that's probably open to discussion, what they might forever be in terms of adequately, whatever, and what you want to see.
Well, I have to see, you know, what the turnout is.
Right, okay, so, right, if we, if the council determines we need an additional meeting, then we just schedule an additional meeting with all the appropriate...
Noticeance.
Okay, all right, so, again, can I get consensus on September, Tuesday, September 23rd?
I'm, I'm currently saying yes, that should probably be good.
I put it, I put it in my calendar, I'm not...
Scott?
I'm in the stability workshop that night.
Okay, okay, all right, so, Monica, if you could report back to Heather, Tuesday, 23rd?
Just the only question I had, did you want the...
You can, I, I didn't bring anything home.
...property to be rezoned, or being proposed to be rezoned, we posted thirty days prior to that year.
Oh, yeah, you did.
Legal, what's the legal requirement?
We, we don't really have a posting requirement per se, right, Tom?
Right.
As far as property postings, I'm just for...
With standard, standard practice, thirty days sounds appropriate.
Okay, just, just for the preparation of those signs, I mean, you know, the carnival ground should have a large plaque posted on at least in two locations, so I'm just trying to...
Yeah, what, what properties do you post?
What's the planning commission?
Anything that's considered for rezoning.
It would be all properties that are being proposed for rezoning from their current zoning to another...
We don't have to go crazy with all the signs, we did go a little crazy before.
Right, no, maybe.
Carnival grounds can be big. Because, well, I mean, in theory...
Well, wait, now, wait a second, was it two by four, or four by eight?
You gotta pass, if you would pass what I, that is political, if you pass my amendment, it could be, ah, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, we'll get off there, yeah.
Go be posted.
In theory, every, every parcel is up for rezoning in a master plan.
Like I said, the whole time, it'd be yellow.
That's right, you're right.
All right, so September, September 23rd?
We're only looking at ones that specifically made the request.
Okay. All right, that ends a rather long and lengthy planning. And then, community center task force did not meet last month, we're meeting this, the seventh, this, which I believe is Thursday.
Thursday, it is Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday, next Thursday, the seventh, so, and that's my report.
All right, sanitation, recycling.
Pass.
All right, streets and roads.
Yeah, we did have a meeting this month, and it was a very good meeting, there was a number of issues discussed, and what's, I sent a, a letter to the staff to request some of the answers the committee liked, so hopefully next meeting they'll get some answers to.
We're having a whole meeting on your letter.
Good, good. One issue that they're really working on is at Park Avenue and, and Ridge, so people coming down Shipley Avenue have a hard time getting out sometimes, because people coming down Park Avenue make a right turn onto Ridge pretty fast, so they're trying to come up with something that would slow people down turning on the Ridge, so they can make it, get out of Shipley pretty easy there. We do have one of, one of our, we do have one of our members here from Streets and Roads, Wayne Creek's back here, he's the secretary, the ones that haven't met him, wave your hand back there.
Hello, Wayne.
He's on our Streets and Roads, and he can come to join tonight and see what goes on. And during my month, I did have a nice tour of town with Barney, if anybody ever gets a chance to do it, he's excellent, done an excellent job, and I was really impressed with what he did in town, we went to all the water, a lot of water pumping stations and the surge plants, and I learned a lot about the town, how it works and everything, and he did an excellent job. Thank you very much.
All right, town administrator, Monica?
Just a couple things, we have two new employees in the maintenance department, Derek Souls and Matt Johnson, to replace the two gentlemen that left recently in the last month or so. We are through with our ADA compliant improvements at Watkins Park, and we also completed a sidewalk and tree pruning project in Turnberry subdivision, where there are a lot of sidewalk panels that had jumped out because of the shower tree roots that were planted a long time ago,